Today, I'll state that we do have a forum. We are going to go and start the reporting for the meeting. Just a reminder that everything said as part of this meeting is part of the permanent reporting that is posted to ADHS's website. So this includes anything said in the meeting on chat or in the video. So just please keep that in mind. We have a pretty big agenda we would like to get through today. So I'm going to go ahead and call to order for MDC. And then Dr. Rice is going to be stepping in as vice chair for PMD as well today. Your roll call for MDC first, Amber Rice and Dan Spade.
Dan Spade here.
Dan Spade here.
Thank you, Dan. Franco Castro Maron, Frank Walter.
Here, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Dan.
Gail Bradley, present. Keith Godfenger. Jason Johnson.
Here.
Josh Gaither. Julie Augustine.
Present.
All right, next is PMD. Amber Rice. Erin O'Connor.
Here.
Brian Smith.
Present.
Chester Keefe. Franco Castro Maron. Darth Gamers.
Present.
Heather Miller.
Present. Heather Miller's present.
Jason Johnson.
Here.
Josh Gaither.
Here.
Mark Hansen. Matt Shaw.
Present.
Paul Dubrowski. Philip Hannan. Shari Brand. We have a forum on goals. Excellent, thank you very much, everyone. So just to go through the process and goal for today, so we have a pretty big agenda that is coffee, sodas, water, and bagels and cream cheese there for those of you that are here in person. We will also have lunch arriving between 11:30 and 11:45 as well. So that way we can have a working lunch to keep this process going. Our two main goals for today are to go through and hopefully approve the addition of an EMR scope of practice as well as a critical care endorsement to a paramedic scope of practice to our current scope of practice table. This is something that we do need to get done during this calendar year. And with our normal meeting cadence of kind of the alternating meetings between PMD and MDC, sometimes that process is slow and doesn't always get done in as expeditious of a fashion as we needed for the rule writing process. So we appreciate everyone being available for this extra meeting and marathon that we're going to have today. So the two top priorities for today are again those two scope of practice additions. We will hopefully also look at some additions to the drug tables and we'll go through those as well. But again, the main goal for today, if we get to other things, wonderful, but the main goal will be the EMR and critical care endorsement for rule writing purposes. Any questions about that part? Because we do have the two committees, what we did when we did the TTTG, we will process as well. We will typically open it up for discussion, have any discussion, and then do a PMD vote and then an MDC vote. And we're going to do these kind of a grouping rather than line item by line item, just because there's a lot to add to scope of practice. When we open up EMR, we'll have, hopefully have any discussion about that component for scope of practice. And when we get to critical care endorsement, we do that discussion about scope of practice and then load of those as a whole. So that is the goal for today's meeting. That is a summary. And if no further questions, I'll go ahead and take a motion to discuss amend and approve the draft table 5.1 for a scope of practice to add EMR or emergency level responder column.
So moved.
All right, first and a second in the room. So the EMR should be relatively simple. There is a national scope of practice for EMRs. And so that is when you look at your package, there is the EMR column that is on the left and you will see highlighted check marks. There are a couple items that, I think one item really that's not in the current national scope, but was requested for us to consider, and that is mechanical CPR devices. Otherwise, everything else on the EMR scope of practice as outlined in the packet matches the national scope of practice for EMRs. So that is the starting point of kind of what we have here. That's fine.
When I looked at the 2019 scope yesterday, that's not on here was airway instruction, manual dislodgement techniques.
Item five under section A. You would like to add a check mark for EMR, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, you are correct, Brian. Thank you, thanks for catching that.
And that implies no tools.
Another line for tools.
Yes.
So.
Thanks for capturing that. Thoughts and discussion on the mechanical CPR devices? This is something that was requested from a stakeholder with the process that if you have two EMS providers and that's all you have to respond to the cardiac arrest and you do have someone in cardiac arrest, if you have the device, hopefully your agency has trained you on how to utilize that and they would not need to be added to the scope of practice for EMRs. So while not in the national scope, I do think that is a good one to consider including. I hear some, see some, here, here's some head shakes, see some head shakes. All right, I'm up and agreed and I see agree from Dr. Gaither as well. Just to point out, because there will be a few questions when we get to potentially a drug table, there is the ability to use auto-injectors. So something that comes up sometimes as a confusion is something is a scope of practice, which I kind of described as a technique versus a medication, which is on the drug tables. So first step is to hopefully approve what the procedures or techniques, which is scope of practice. And then when we get to drug tables, then we can have further discussion about things for EMR that are being proposed, such as auto-injector for Epi, Alloxxone antidotes. So this would be simply approving the scope of practice for that component.
I have a question about the blood pressure for the EMRs.
Yes.
We have manual but automated.
Yes, Brian?
I had one, I guess it's kind of a question. In the statute, under this, it has non-invasive blood glucose monitoring. And on here, it has glucose monitoring. So I'm not sure if by saying non-invasive, that means they can run the machine, but they can't finger stick anybody. And so if we had a check mark here, then they would be able to finger stick, I think. So I'm not, I'm just, since they put it in the statute with that kind of wording, to me, that means they can learn to run a machine, but whoever else they're with has to do the finger stick. So I'm just, I'm not, because this doesn't say with finger stick, it said blood glucose monitoring, which to me means they can finger, they would be able to finger stick, but if we put it in there as a.
It's not in the national scope, so I think.
It's not in, what's that?
It's not a national.
It's not in the national scope. I was just bringing that up because of the way the statute was written for that training that's required in the EMR description in 2201.
And that is for the medical director pathway.
It's the one we talked about, that it doesn't exist.
What's that?
It's requiring training on technology that doesn't exist in that statute, that change. Non-invasive blood glucose monitoring.
Yeah. Is that why?
Yeah, it needs legislation to fix it.
Enough said.
Yeah.
Another technical correction out of the hundreds they do every year.
Also mentioned pulse oximeter is included in the statute, but excluded here. Again, I think we kind of were trying to match what is in national scope as closely as possible.
Yeah, it's interesting, AMR, sorry, is training the EMRs an hour in blood glucose monitors and an hour in pulse oximetry in their course? I don't know if they need, if it's not going to be included, then they could obviously remove it. I was just confused why they had chosen.
They're getting their authorization from a medical director rather than through a training program, I think. And so that falls under that section.
Medical director could choose to just say, these will be included and override the state.
For EMRs, yes, the way that was written. So the EMR process includes a couple different pathways to get, the bureau is not able to certify EMRs because that was not added to statute. So EMRs are not going to be certified by the state of Arizona unless it was legislative change. Bureau would not be certifying EMRs. However, we would oversee the training program. So there's the training program pathway, which the bureau does oversee, and that was kind of the rule writing process we've been going through with education committee. And then there's the medical director pathway, which is separate.
So bottom line, they can learn how to run a machine, but they can't do finger sticks. That's per statute.
Yeah, it specifically says non-invasive.
Okay. That statute would be fixed. What I'm getting at is, is there latitude to do STRs on some of these things? Like to me, I'm in full agreement with allowing the glucose device and those sorts of things to be, but that sounds like STR type. Do they, do they, I'm sorry.
That would necessarily fall under then would be the ones who have medical director approval to be EMRs versus those who go through a training program because they're BLS. So they don't have, they're not necessarily going to have medical directors.
The concern if we add STRs to the EMR and EMT sections on the scope of practice that that requires medical direction, which they otherwise do not require medical direction.
It also requires online medical direction.
Sometimes even if they can get someone to be an administrative, the access to online is problematic component. So it sounds like for the EMR section, there is agreement to include the mechanical CPR device and to also make the correction to on page one, number five, airway obstruction manual dislodgement, to approve that as that is a national scope of practice as well.
As Matthew.
Second.
Sure, so let's go ahead and take a vote on the PMD side. Now that we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any?
Nay. May I explain my nay vote? Okay. First off, the name of this is Medical Direction Protocols for Emergency Medical Care Technicians, and EMRs in Arizona are not EMCTs. The other thing is, I don't see anything in statutes that authorizes the bureau to have any regulatory authority over EMRs. They were given the ability to certify a course, but that's pretty much all I can find. And then, of course, they can, they regulate CON holders so they can watch where EMRs are working. So the reason this, I think, gets to be able to be in here is because this is exempt rulemaking, so the department can, I guess, do anything they want. But this implies that EMRs are EMCTs, and I think that's a little bit deceptive to have this as a part of that. So that's why my nay vote. So you don't have to follow ARS 411030, where this would be a violation of that statute if this were regular rulemaking. So that's my nay vote.
So it's approved from PMD, we will go to an MDC vote. So anyone opposed to the EMR scope of practice as proposed, please say nay. Any abstentions?
This is, hey, this is Dan. Are we able to, is MDC able to discuss this? It needs to be a motion, that means there needs to be the potential for discussion. And honestly, I just have clarifying questions.
So I think we had that open discussion, we can certainly re.
Well, no, we didn't, we didn't have any discussion after the motion. And the motion actually ultimately gets it on the table. Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
If, is all of this wrangling only about education for which they cannot be certified in Arizona?
Well.
May I?
Yes.
Part of this is national registry. If we don't have a standard for EMR, then they can't also be nationally registered because they're required by this, by national registry, their training program to be approved by the state. So the way that, you know, there's, there's, there's some problems with the statute, and that is one of them, is to allow EMRs to have a standard that meets the national standard so that they can attain national registry certification. So we do now have training programs that we're teaching EMR that cannot allow them to be certified by national, or registered by national registry.
Different table for them, where they're not a part of EMCTs then.
See, this is Dan. I don't, I don't think we have clarity on the 100,000-foot view. We spend all our time arguing about adding a couple of things. I still don't understand, for instance, simple question as, you know, in our system, does this mean that if we approve this and they're trained and they become nationally registered, but there is no certification in Arizona? Are they able to practice in Arizona with their national registry without having an Arizona certification? And do you, lots of people on this call probably that, and that may be apparent too. That's completely unapparent to me as somebody who's helping to lead a system.
So we, so to Dan, to give a little bit of background, we've had several education meeting, open meetings discussing this to kind of talk about the different pathways. And so there is, the goal is to at least allow people to go through a training program that is approved by the state to allow them to gain national registry certification. EMRs will be allowed to work in Arizona in two specific circumstances. So it's going to be jurisdictions with a certain, below a certain population, which I think is 10,000, is that correct? Ruth is shaking her head, yes. And the others for interfacility transport. So it's very specific as to where EMRs can be utilized.
I understand that. And so what I'm saying is, is the answer, yes, they can be trained in these, what will be potentially approved today as training programs, educational programs, and become nationally registered. And does that hold official authority for them to be an EMR under their national registry in the state of Arizona?
They already have that in accordance to statute.
Yes.
The way the statute is written is the department is unable to certify them.
But they are able to work under those specific circumstances, so population less than 10,000 or for interfacility.
And does it require just the training program or does it require national registry?
Neither. Neither. Neither.
Looks like some homework wasn't done on the statute.
Yes.
The bureau does not get to weigh in on any statute writing. We just have to write the rules to try to support the statute as best as possible. Brian?
I think, I think the way the statute is written about the population less than 10,000 only applies to CON holders using EMRs. I don't think, Phoenix Fire, if they wanted to put EMRs on an engine company, as long as they weren't working for the, for the ambulance transport side of it, could do that. There are no regulation of the fire service, it's only the regulation for the CON holders. So it could cover more than, just because of a population of less than 10,000, if it was fire departments doing it that weren't CON holders.
So kind of back to the initial discussion, this was the request through the rule writing process. I know Ruth Ann is on the line, and she wanted to weigh in, but essentially the request is to at least develop a standard for the state, since these are now going to be part of a responding unit that will be potentially billing for ambulance transports in the state of Arizona. So the goal is to at least have a standard scope of practice for EMRs, with the understanding that we can't certify them, but we at least have a standard for training programs, a standard for scope of practice.
You said they will be able to bill for a transport in an ambulances.
Well, there's some, some yes, some no to others, but there's also, I think, some legislation and process that may be addressed in that as well.
They just, that just got through. I read it this morning. It allows them to, to bill at the BLS rate, I think.
And the criteria for the first responder on that ride is what? Just.
A training program or authorization of their medical director?
Okay.
With some training.
Yeah, so what I think this document becomes is more or less a guideline for anybody who would pick up, I'm interested in employing emergency medical responders. What's their scope of practice? If I'm not exactly been following all the scope of practice all these years, and suddenly I become to the point where I want to employ EMRs, I'd go to this document and say, well, this is a decent guideline. I know the state doesn't certify emergency medical responders, but this is a good guideline to go by, that this should at least be what they're trained up in.
Well, but that's not what, if you're a medical director, there's a few things that you have to do in terms of training, but it doesn't cover necessarily all this stuff that's in here. So it's going to be, whether you decided you might do that would be one thing, but there's going to be, there could be other medical directors out there that, oh, no, we're just going to do these. I think there's like four or five items on there that they have to do and that.
Well, yeah, and the regulated process. I think this represents some, you know, some, some good information. And it's, we understand it's not necessarily regulating or certifying on the part of the bureau. You know, at some point, it's fostering, a fostering system development.
Yeah, I wouldn't have an EMR if they mirrored the test in order to create a training program for their EMRs. And that's exactly what they did. They went to that and they said, okay, this is the national standard, this is what we recommend. And then they go to the medical director and say, do you approve this?
We ran a bit of a parliamentary procedure pickle here, too.
I think there was a question, but we did have the motions initially. So if we need to, no, it's okay, I think the group, if, Dr. Spade, if you feel like we need to make an official second motion, the discussion, we aren't going to have two separate discussions for each item, we're going to have a discussion. So if we need to clarify, then we can certainly clarify and just, for the next motion, we'll do a PMD motion and an MDC motion. So for the purpose of this, can I get a motion from MDC? Thank you, in a second, please. A second, okay. So we've got the first and the second, we've had the discussion, PMD has voted to approve with one nay. If there's any further discussion from MDC members.
Yeah, this is Dan. My second question is, if I'm understanding correctly, I may be a medical director who one of my CON holding agencies, I approve a program within that agency, not educational now, their use of them, but the individuals neither need nor have either online or administrative medical direction. And if that's the case, doesn't that create kind of, that creates a strange liability for the medical director? They've approved the, they've in essence authorized the agency to have them, but they can't give them medical direction online or administrative. Is that incorrect?
I see two hands up from two experts, Chief Garcia and Ruth Ann, so I will open it up to which interview wants to jump on that first. Yes, the, Rachel cannot speak. Why don't you go ahead and speak up if you would like?
Hi, this is Ruth Ann Smichael. I've been working on these rules for a while now. With respect to the concern about the title, not including EMRs, it's the article title, Medical Direction Protocols for Emergency Medical Care Technicians that we might have to look at. The title of the table itself is just Arizona Scope of Practice Skills. So that would not need to be changed. With respect to the medical direction, the, the statute is a little odd in that it specifically says that an administrative medical director can approve an individual to essentially practice as an EMR. In the, in Article Two, which provides guidance for administrative medical directors, the plan is to put some parameters, which the education committee has looked at and supported for if an administrative medical director is going to approve the use of an individual to be an EMR, then there are certain parameters that they need to adhere to. They have to make sure that the person can do the things that they're supposed to be doing. And they have to provide some sort of oversight. Does that partly address your question?
Yes, but it does, I'm just, again, that's the only, kind of a, we're in the weeds, but now's the time, because now's, now's when we're likely to approve. So as I'm understanding, the, the program and even the individual can be approved by the medical director, but they need neither online nor administrative medical direction. And I don't think that this provides for the medical director to say, I will only approve if you will come under my medical direction. And if, if you approve someone to practice in this scope, but you can't have medical direction administrative or online, set online aside for the moment, but administrative medical direction open, then that creates a substantial liability.
Not disagreeing.
So I think all of these are the issues that we have identified in the legislation as it is written. But again, we are not able at the bureau's standpoint to address any of those parts of that, the barriers in how it was written. Our goal is to at least support it as best as possible, with the goal being that we create a scope of practice that matches the national scope to give some kind of baseline for entities to choose to use or not utilize. So that is the goal of the EMR scope of practice. But yes, to everyone's point, there are the barriers in place, which is that the bureau is not able to certify them and does not have oversight over those individuals. Again, nothing that can be changed unless there's legislative change. There's also a risk to the medical director. If the medical director chooses to approve someone because they don't necessarily have the same authority of oversight as you would in another EMS provider. So with that all being said, we're trying to do the best we can with what is in place to at least provide some standard for the state for an EMR level.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out that there's a real possibility that the EMS medical directors of Arizona and the groups and related associations will say, this is all well and good, but we strongly recommend that you not approve these programs because philosophically there's a massive, there's a Grand Canyon that you cross when you start taking. when you start taking responsibility for people who you can't have authority over. Just, I think that's real. And I know there's nothing we can do about it today, but it's certainly pertinent.
You cannot see the head shakes in the room, but there are many.
Given the way this is currently written, as a medical director, can you just say, we will not be utilizing EMR, but the EMR option is available through the state? Essentially, that's what we're trying to figure out.
I think the medical director for the CON holder can make that decision. You shall not use EMRs. But once you allow them to use EMRs, then you, then you just basically buy yourself an autonomous practitioner.
For sure. And the hard part, too, is I can imagine for certain areas, you're going to get pressured from your CONs to want to use it. But it's like, I agree with you. It's a hard decision to decide whether or not that is something you want to utilize.
Kind of gets to why we're here debating this. There must be some sort of, lack of a better term, heavyweight constituents out there that want this to happen in some fashion. So here we are.
No, for sure. And to echo what Gail's here mentioning is that this has passed and we're just trying to figure out how to best kind of make this work. I agree with you, right? Because in my mind, I'm thinking, which scenario, as a medical director, would I want to utilize EMRs? I'm with you. So I'm just.
But somebody way out world in the rural area, wilderness areas, that wants to provide a better safety net. So their heart's in the right place.
Agreed.
And so I think what the Bureau is doing is trying to provide a resource for such a person to pick up a piece of paper and say, yeah, this in conjunction with their scope practices. You know, there's chasms, as Dr. Spade alludes to in this. Holes all over the place, but when you're trying to provide a safety net, I guess, it's hard for me as an urban guy to put myself in such a position. But I'm sure that's what the mindset is out there in rural, wilderness areas.
One thing to note.
My last question, my last question is, does Medical Direction Commission want to approve a medical provider in Arizona that does not have to have medical oversight? But that they have a bizarre ability to take responsibility for them. I just, even licensed independent, you know, practitioners, nurse practitioners, physicians, none of us have non-oversight. But this has created a group of practitioners who will not have medical oversight.
So technically, EMTs do not need medical direction either, unless they are performing an STR.
That was a bad thing to remind us of, Gail.
A question that I get on a weekly basis that is in statute. So EMTs do not require medical direction unless they are performing an STR. So that is kind of the current states, the way things are in Arizona.
We currently have EMRs operating in the state of Arizona, right? I mean, it's not like they don't exist already, operating without medical oversight. Like, it's sort of something that's already existed. It's not a new thing. This is just us responding to the legislation.
Correct. So I will go back. We do have a first and a second for MDC to vote on this. So there's any, no further discussion? Any opposed to the addition of EMR scope of practice outlined? Please say nay.
This is Dan, I say nay.
Okay. Any abstentions?
This is Julie, I have a pension.
I'm sorry, is that abstain Julie?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have the right word.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So it's something approved, one nay, and one abstain. The next, just for, everyone is clear, we will do a PMD member's motion in a second, and then we will do MDC motion in a second for the next item, which is discuss them at an approved draft table 501 EMT scope of practice skills to add paramedic with critical care endorsement. I get PMD first and a second. See Matt for the first.
So moved.
Second for Phil, thank you. And then MDC, if I can get first and a second. I see first from Eve, second, second, thank you, second for Amber. All right, so both committees have officially opened for discussion. I will give a little bit of context. Critical care was supposed to be the one that will be probably needing quite a bit more time. There is no set national scope of practice. I did review, several states have a critical care endorsement. And so we utilize that as kind of the basis for this, with the assumption that anything that's in current paramedic scope of practice would be in critical care endorsement. Because obviously, their baseline paramedic would have that certification. And then went and looked at other states that have the critical care endorsement, to look for some things. And then also got quite a bit of feedback from various stakeholders who had emailed with items. So that is how we have the proposed version that is here before us today. So I will probably say, the easiest way to do this will be, if you look at the far right column with green critical care and compare it to paramedic, that we just kind of compare and go down to where there's something that's not present for the current paramedic level. Yes.
Can I make a comment about the first one? That's okay. For airway ventilation, oxygenation, numbers six and seven, we've never had a definition before of what automated transport ventilator is. Our agency, for example, utilizes this old EMV Plus, which has many of the, I guess, advanced ventilatory modes that are listed under option seven, which is listed only under critical care paramedic. I imagine that other transport agencies that transport interfacility ventilated patients also have ventilators that have those advanced modes. And it would be my suggestion that we just remove option seven altogether, just leave it as automated transport ventilator, as opposed to having two different options. Seeing how we've never defined automated transport ventilator in the past. Also, I think this list is largely really good, and I appreciate all the hard work you guys did.
I could echo what Matt had said, the list is great, tremendous work. Again, I bring up the question, because you have a certain type of automated ventilator, is there a latitude to plop STR in this somewhere to address individual agency differences with respect to the techniques used?
I just think we probably get into the weeds if we try to become too specific. You know, like right now, under option seven, it says SMV, APRV, et cetera. But we don't really know what automated transport ventilator is defined as. And, you know, there's new ventilation votes that seem to come out yearly. And so I don't know if the state wants to get in the business of keeping track of all of those.
It doesn't necessarily get to state, minor managing things. It's in the eye of the beholder, the eye of the agency, the eye of the medical director, what constitutes when special training is required. I think, I think what Bureau could say is, put your ventilator. And the only way that you can have language that is on point is put STR in there. But that's just my opinion. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just wanted to bring it up for a general discussion.
Brian in the room, and then Dr. Dethar online.
Yeah, I think that, that if you look at the technology that's coming out to go, what exactly is an automated transport ventilator? Is really difficult. And I wonder if it might not be better just to have a line that says transport ventilator and leave out, take away line seven and delete the automated and just have transport ventilator and let that kind of hang in the definition there. I think it would be outside of an Autovent 2000. You know, there's very little made today that's not going to have some of those other modes in it, just because they're going to be there, so.
All right, Josh.
I think I would probably disagree a little with the sentiment. I think there's value in keeping these two items separate. I think maybe clarifying what an automated transport ventilator is, perhaps with the parentheses behind it that states something like, a ventilator with settings for respiratory rate, FiO2, and peep. I think APRV, SIMV is a little, is fairly easy. APRV is very, very not easy. This is not a mode of ventilation that any paramedic, without training in advanced ventilation techniques, should be using without a lot of experience. It's hard for me. I would be reticent to have someone with no formal training in that use those ventilators.
Is there a way to, instead of saying, regulating the equipment that they're using, instead regulate the techniques that are being utilized? Because I think that's what we're kind of discussing, right? APRV or SIMV are specific advanced airway techniques, as opposed to basic ventilation, which we could use.
You're going to run in, I mean, you're going to run into a list that's never going to end over time. And, you know, some of those terms are going to be trademarked by the manufacturer. You know, Bi-Pap is Drager, Arvent is BL. It's the exact same thing, but you're not going to cover every, every title, you know?
Let's see, question with their hand up online.
Yeah, hey, this is Chris from Reere Equal Fire. So we do interfacility transports. We do run a vent machine. I would agree with keeping them separated. And partly, part of the reason I say that is because we've had some of our personnel that has some of the advanced ventilator line support classes, which certainly falls more in the number seven line. But really, we are limited because of our guidelines with base hospital on the number six line. So I agree on having them separated. But I do also agree having a clear definition on number six.
Clarify, I just don't understand, like, what's limiting, what's limiting from your base hospital?
From your base automated transport ventilator.
All right, so for instance, our guidelines say that the ventilation is set by the RT of the sending facility for a transport. And if any problem is encountered, to call base hospital. So it really limits our providers. But some of the training that's available, and it's more on the advanced part, more, it's more on the critical care part, has them now dealing with the SIMV, APRV, and those kinds of settings. I think that would also mean having different set of guidelines, and especially now with the critical care paramedic endorsement.
But I think if we just, I think if we just said transport ventilator.
Transport ventilator.
It's up to your local medical director to give you whatever, whatever ventilating options they feel comfortable with and they've trained you on. And the state has covered you by saying, you can operate a transport ventilator, regardless of what type of ventilator, what type of modes. It's up to your individual medical director to decide, I'm good with oscillation, or I'm good with APRV, or whatever. I mean, to me, that just seems like the simplest thing possible, is like, keep it, keep it simple.
What would be a consideration for utilizing, if we do keep separate lines, transport ventilator and then transport ventilator with advanced modes?
How are we defining both of those things? Because I guess my main concern is like, I agree, there's no doubt that there are certain modes that are more difficult, or more high risk. Crowne, oscillating, prolonged breath holds. But I think that it's the same issue we run into is how do you define the difference of, to your question of what's an advanced thing or not? So I just, I'm similarly worried about having seven be separate, because then other facilities, six places that are already trained in how to use SIMV, because example, it's listed there, which Bureau should already kind of, like a lot of it is already comfortable using. So I don't want to then suddenly limit their ability to do so because of the phrasing here. That's kind of my concern.
Let's see, Orlando comment, agree with administrative medical oversight and training and accountability. And then I see Dr. Southworth with his hand up.
All right, yes, so for Gila River, we've been using the Zolls event for the past three years as our transport vent, which has both automated and advanced modes. And they're trained, all my paramedics have been trained and passed off on all these things. We do have several critical care paramedics that have already taken the course, of course, but many of them are certified, but not all of them are. And so I think some of this language in here might actually limit sometimes on staffing issues or other things, when there is a, when they could use the automated mode, because there is an automated mode on the Zolls event that is just preset and used. But it is an event that can be used in an advanced way as well. So I think that this could be problematic in some things, the way that we're separating this out. That's just my two cents.
I think that my only issue with having them be together, it's, I think that the ventilator, yes, may have specific modes that are, that the ventilator is capable of. I think that ventilator training is more than just utilizing the machine, right? I think understanding respiratory physiology, understanding cardiovascular physiology, using advanced modes requires a much higher level of knowledge, not only of the ventilator itself, but of some of the physiologic parameters that you're affecting when you use these advanced modes. So I do see a point in keeping them separate for, you know, paramedics with, you know, the general paramedic training, using basic ventilator modes on whatever ventilator, versus using some of these other advanced modes that require just a higher level of knowledge of respiratory and cardiovascular physiology. Not saying you can't buy the ventilator, we're just saying that your protocols and your STR skills would cover a smaller subset of the functions. I think it's what we're.
So we could. I think the thing we keep running into is, there's no doubt, I agree that there's, it's very different between basic and advanced. But then the question is, how do we define those all? So like, that's what I think we're running into the issue.
Dr. Zaidler?
Could we fix this by turning line seven and adding an STR under general paramedic? So then our paramedics, if we've trained them, could use these and can continue to do stuff that I think they probably are already doing.
What, that still leaves though, what is an automated transport ventilator? What does that count as? Because it's not defined anywhere. But I agree with you, I agree with you, though, yes, an STR would work as well for line seven for paramedic. But what is an automated transport ventilator?
I think Dr. Gater touched on that. He was saying, maybe add something to say basic parameters, respiratory rate, FiO2, peep. And I don't know, he even said maybe SMI, SIMV, I may be wrong, but maybe some basic.
So I think one of the things to keep in mind is that we have not had a definition for automated transport ventilator ever. So what we're really talking about is looking to add from a critical care paramedic, who is going to have the additional training in physiology. So kind of focusing again on the addition for the critical care component. And maybe what we need to do, instead of defining SIMV and others, just because of the fact that technology changes, different methods, that we just, the way it's written, which is transport ventilator with advanced modes, with the presumption that if this is only being approved for a critical care paramedic, this is someone who's had that training.
What is an advanced mode? I guess I'm still stuck on the definitions. Like, I feel like we're making it more complicated than it needs to be. It's up to the medical director. Like, if Eve, Eve is okay with a certain ventilating type with the ventilator that our agency's purchased, he's going to sign off on that, he's going to sign up on the training, he's going to sign up on the modes, right? I'm not going to, I'm not going to get to do different, use different ventilator modes that my medical director is not comfortable with me doing, because we haven't had adequate training for it.
So I think, again, the goal, with the number one goal being to affect the critical care endorsement. So if we look at just, you know, rather than try to fix a definition that's been in place for many, many years, because we haven't talked about that before, if we just say transport ventilator, so the assumption is this is beyond a normal automated ventilator. So it's something with advanced, it's only for critical care paramedic. And if down the road, we decide we want to expand that, or we, you know, we can get to that later in the meeting when we look at the paramedic. I think the goal we need to keep in mind is, we really want to address the critical care endorsement. So do we need to fix six to add seven for critical care paramedic?
I hear you, I guess my one, it's the one point I'll bring up, right? Is as soon as you say something is more, you're just, without having said it, you've now implied something else is less. So I think that's the concern there. By saying, adding line seven, saying critical care paramedic can do more advanced stuff, you're implying the paramedic now cannot get to that same level. I think that's the concern there. I totally agree.
Critical care endorsement, though. I mean, the point of the critical care endorsement is that they have capabilities and knowledge that are beyond the scope of a paramedic, despite STR. I mean, I know what you guys are saying, but we have to think statewide. And I think that that's, there has to be a consideration of these, this endorsement being a statewide endorsement. And we cannot always translate what is capable in one place to the way we should allow folks to operate across the entire. The way we should allow folks to operate across the entire state of Arizona. That's, that's a, I think that's the point we keep making a suck on.
Yeah, and the point I just wanted to finish on this, with that statement is just to agree with what Gail is saying, get rid of the specific definitions and leave it as advanced. I just wanna point out the fact that we are saying advanced, it implies something is less. However, I do feel unfortunately to your point, we do need to have delineation. I think getting rid of the specifics and having it written as advanced allows for everything, right? It keeps it vague enough, but also makes it clear enough to that when we were trading critical care paramedics. Hey, these are the advanced airways, these are the advanced modes, here's how we train for it.
See Dr. Johnson online from Alaska.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. It's beautiful up here. Oh, yeah, beautiful up here. Um, so yeah, I, actually that's what I was gonna say is if we could just take off that last part that says SIMV. And I actually agree with the idea, if it's possible to put STR under the paramedic, uh, under line seven towards the end. Um, then that way, if you have somebody you're working on and you are being trained, I personally wouldn't do that. I would only use them with critical care medics, but if there's an area where they're already having trained paramedics who don't have their critical care. Sir, it's not taking away what they already do, but it would be up to the medical director to sign off on any of these advanced settings.
Yes.
Um, I'm trying to put myself in the position of what the bureau needs to do in this. This is a little bit different than the, the EMR uh deal, cause you're actually endorsing. The critical care paramedic and, and saying this is what should be. And so with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion for PMD that uh. We uh, keep line seven, take out uh, the SI, SIMV, APRV, et cetera. And make a, an STR for both paramedic and critical care endorsement.
So I think part of this is what's included in basic training for critical care paramedics. I think that's kind of the component that we don't wanna make things an STR for critical care paramedic if this is part of their basic training. Because there is extensive, I shouldn't say basic training, there is extensive training needed to do the critical care paramedic. And so once we then start making things STRs, uh, that's, becomes much more problematic. Because if a critical care paramedic is going to different facility, different entity. And the medical director has to approve them doing this with one entity versus another, versus that is part of their overall training and expertise. Um, we've really tried to move away from STRs as much as possible because they actually have created more, I think, issues than benefit over time. Because you have to have a training, like curriculum to support them at a statewide level. Um, there's, there's just a lot more complexity to that. Um, so I think from a critical care perspective, this is what they're trained to do. This is like their bread and butter.
Hey, that's fair. What I, uh, I'd like to leave off the STR for paramedic with critical care endorsement. Just leave it as a checkmark. Um, but I'm hearing that people want to have a. Uh, a paramedic with special training to do this, so that part of my motion remains. So again, keep line seven, take off the uh, the descriptors for advanced modes. And uh, uh, put in paramedic as an STR.
I'll put strike through on the SIMV, but yes. Shelley is displaying it and then Dr. Gamer is suggesting that in the paramedic column for number seven be at STR. Josh?
Uh, forgive my, my ignorance, this is totally a, a question. Um, my impression of the primary reason for implementing a critical care paramedic into the scope of practice. Maybe not the primary, but a motivating reason was to allow agencies to bill at the critical care transport level. Um, what is it that differentiates a critical care transport paramedic when it comes to a patient on a ventilator? Um, that allows you to bill at a higher level of care if a regular paramedic can also do that skill?
Probably availability issue. Uh, if you're gonna have a critical care paramedic, they, they have those skills. If the param, their paramedic standing there does not have those skills, does not have special training. I think you could still, as an agency, bill for a critical care.
No, you have, that is part of the reason that we are actually adding the critical care scope of practice is in order. The reason why we are on a very set deadline for this from a rule writing perspective, uh, which I'm sure Rutham will correct me if I misspeak on this. Is because as of January first, we have to have a specific definition for critical care paramedic in order for entities to bill at that rate. Or use nurses. Or use nurses, thank you.
Right, and my concern here is, alright, let's use the Casa Grande uh, example. You all have critical care paramedics and regular paramedics, both can transport using APRV as an example. Um, you send a regular paramedic and you bill an ALS transport, you send a critical care paramedic and you bill a critical care transport. This seems very um, like a, a problematic area.
And, and I think one of the things that maybe what we need to do for the, to be as expeditious about this as possible. The number one goal, the reason we have approval to open scope of practice is to address EMR and critical care. So we could probably spend an inordinate amount of time debating a lot of things being added to the paramedic scope of practice. But really that is not kind of the main goal or intent of today's meeting. And so maybe we can just focus on the critical care column. Uh, and at a later date, if we can get permission to bring scope of practice back. Um, or if there's further discussion at May 16th MBC meeting, we can consider those items and we get approval for that. But I think I just wanna make sure we don't get off, uh, we're spending a lot of time on a column we're not supposed to actually be addressing today.
So my motion dies for last second, I'd like to restate or make a new motion.
Okay.
There was no second to my motion.
I would have seconded it, sorry. I didn't realize we were done discussing. That's okay.
Okay, so strike STR for paramedic, uh, but I want this concept. So uh, just, just rest of the motion stands. As Shelley has recorded here, transport ventilator with advanced modes, green check mark in the uh. In the uh.
And we're not, and we are not gonna vote on each item individually, so we're gonna kind of keep moving down. So the good thing is we're. Agreement and consensus, yes, Aaron?
Sorry, I thought, um, I'll wait, I was gonna raise a question about item fifteen, so we're not there yet, I apologize.
Not a problem.
I, I guess I'm still, as someone who, who manages an agency. When do I have to have a critical care paramedic transporting with a ventilator? What defines advanced modes? Like, we still haven't determined that. So like, from a functional point of view, like, that's not, that's not clear. Do you know what I mean? Like, I, I, I understand all the debate, but functionally, like, that's not a usable definition.
I don't, I mean, that's, I think, something that from a, a perspective of how it's been written for years and what we're adding is advanced. Uh, you know, again, it's, if you feel that this is gonna be something that qualifies as a critical care level. And that's where you would utilize it for someone with a critical care endorsement to do that type of transport, um.
Having an STR there alleviate that or no? I'm just trying to think with you.
Well, I don't, no, I don't think so, because.
And I don't think you can do the STR today anyway.
No, I'm just trying to think how else. That's why I'm just going back, like, we haven't defined what these words mean and so there's, we're, we're gonna be, agencies will be stuck. When, when do I need to get a critical care paramedic? What, what is advanced? What is automated? I guess, like, I, I really think we're overthinking it, like, we should just leave it very vague and let the local medical director. Determine what they consider is advanced, what they consider requires a critical care paramedic.
So that is currently, then, that would be allowing the current medical director to just find what's advanced, so that's what you just said. So if they're gonna define what's in advance, that would take you to number seven. Versus what's currently being done.
Yes. Like, for example, the definition could be, I'm just thinking aloud, like, one definition could be prone is advanced, the rest is not.
True. Okay.
Uh, this is Dan. I, I, Josh's, as far as I'm concerned, Josh's question still stands. And Josh was not asking to alter paramedic practice, that, that, I didn't hear that at all. What I heard was, um, one medical director in one system might say. That mode is uh, critical care and we're going to bill that mode for critical care. And a medical director in another system says, no, we can do that, but we don't need the critical care paramedics. And there's, and uh, and the, the issue of as soon as billing gets involved, and since that's one of the drivers clearly in this. The potential for um, federal payers and state payers to say, hey, they're doing the same thing. And then if, if the answer is, well, uh, if you have a critical care training and certification, you do it better. But they're doing the same thing, is it, does that mean that the paramedic, the, the quote, regular paramedic is not doing it safely or as well? It's a bit like, you know, the, the difference between the regular hamburger and the deluxe hamburger is the chef washes their hands. Uh, and to be the, to give you the deluxe hamburger, um, is, are they safer? Are they better? That question stands and that is not trying to tinker with, we already have, we already have paramedics doing. What will probably be determined to be a critical care uh, technique. So I, I don't think it's too simple and, um, and I, I don't, and frankly, I don't think we should be forced by time. To do things that don't make sense, my thought.
It would benefit you if I withdrew my motion completely so as to not carve out this line I have. And, and do we have a, I, I, I think the best we're gonna do is not be specific. After the word modes and line seven. And, and then if we have time again, we discuss this. I think it's gonna be better so we don't even have to vote for me to retract that motion.
Thank you, yes. Your, the goal is to not line it a vote, so.
Okay.
Alright. So I think we will go to the next one, which uh, is chest tube placement and management for critical care paramedics. So this is, my understanding of this is part of their training. Hey, I, I saw a couple thumbs up in the, in the room, any other discussion on that one for paramedics? Yes, Aaron?
I guess if my question comes with taking fourteen and fifteen in um, consideration together. You know, the finger thoracostomy, you know, came up in PMD conversations at previous meetings. And um, it wasn't clear to me based on the evidence and the literature, its role. But then if, if, if they can then place a chest tube, um, I guess I don't understand why. Even finger thoracostomy is a, is a requirement given that needle decompression would be followed by a chest tube placement. So just trying to get clarity on, on the two items fourteen and fifteen.
That's the question essentially asking, is the finger thoracotomy redundant? And I guess into that point, uh, we have, the, based on the literature and stuff we've seen, needles are, are okay, is the short answer. And chest tubes take time, so the idea of being the finger thoracotomy would provide the benefit that a chest tube can provide. But can be done in a um, more realistic setting that would be in the field. So that's kind of the idea for having the two separated.
And I think fairly standard practice amongst other critical care paramedic groups, it would be both of those procedures. Uh, Jason?
Have it spelled wrong? Thoracotomy not custom?
No, you're right, okay.
I, I am the, saying it wrong every single time, so I apologize.
Okay. And this, that's, that's actually what I was gonna say too, is, um, I think there is place for both of those without going into any hidden information. Uh, with the flag rose covering, they had a gunshot wound to the chest. And so they had bilateral finger thoracotomies and did not do the chest tube just for sake of time. So, and then they, they were immediately to sit down going. Um, so there is a, a time when you would only do finger thoracostomies in a code situation while you're working multiple other things. Cause they had too many other things to try to, to deal with.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, any further questions or conversations about line fourteen and fifteen, which is chest tube placement and management and finger thoracostomy? Yes.
Uh, I had just a question on twelve, since that's the assist only. Is it a little contradictory that we say that assist them only and then we add them in for fourteen and fifteen? Should we be adding them for twelve or not adding them for twelve?
Well, anything that's in paramedic scope, we're including just because they would have to have a paramedic scope practice. And then they would also have the ability so they can assist someone and then they also have the ability to place.
Let's see, I recognize the contradiction.
It, it would be harder to have something not present for them on their scope. That would actually probably raise more questions of what, are they then not able to assist? So even though, yes, it is a little bit difficult, that's why it's listed for us. Yes, Brian?
I'm, I just have a comment about sixteen when, since we backed up to twelve. Right, never mind. I was in a different, different section, I guess.
So uh, we have, so, so there's big consensus on that. Um, moving down to line twenty-four, go back up, Shelley. Uh, this is one that I wanted to get feedback from the group, so medication assisted intervention with paralytics is an STR for paramedics. So it's essentially our RSI. The presumption is that this is part of critical care paramedic training, so that's why it's a checkmark and not a STR for critical care endorsements. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, comfortable with that addition. Line thirty, uh, just even though it's not new, we did add a couple of years ago, hyaluronic acid cannula for regular paramedics. So added for critical care endorsement as well. But we are now going to page three. And we would go down to the bottom, which is fourteen, fifteen. And then if you want maybe, uh, excellent, sixteen, seventeen. So these are, might need a little bit of word smoothing and there might be some duplication. Because different versions had different terminology for some of the same things, uh, so I wanted to make sure it was all captured here. So this is now gonna be critical care endorsement specific. So there's hemodynamic monitoring, line fourteen invasive, central and arterial. ICP, increased intracranial pressure monitoring. And then uh, circulatory augmentation device monitoring management, uh, examples, uh, intra-tertiary balloon pump and Impella. And then ventricular assist device monitoring management. So those are kind of different circulatory pieces that were, would be added in, I knew the critical care endorsement. Yes, Brian?
Hi, I'm, uh, I'm not making a, a judgment call on, on necessarily on this. I just uh, think it may be an area of thought as I'm sixteen to have. Balloon pumps and Impellas, uh, I think bats are not such an issue because those are really like very specialized. But there are areas in the north where there are people who are getting balloon pumps and Impellas placed. And I don't know exactly how fixed wings may or may not been flying, but we were shut down three days this year, I think. And about five or six days last year. Um, and the thought that, because this is prevalent and it's been said here, I want them out of my hospital. In, in other cases, I want them out of my ED, in this case, I want them out of my hospital and this is in your scope of practice. And you're gonna put a paramedic by themselves in the back of an ambulance because they can get through the snow. Uh, bouncing down whatever road, um, where they can't get out. And uh, there's gonna be a lot of pressure potentially to, uh, to, to do that. And I know that's the difference between, you know, trying to separate that out necessarily between ground and flight is not gonna work, but just a thought. Cause it will occur some point in time, cause there's plenty of, uh, places doing interventional cardiology that may put those in. Um. Uh, where they may want to back hospital when you're done.
I see Jason, get your hand up first, nobody, Eve next.
Yeah, and so I, Brian, that's a good point. So maybe what you could do, and, and I don't know if this is feasible or not, but for ones that you want to do like Impella or balloon pumps. Have those as an STR, then if your medical director does not want to train you on those or make sure that you're qualified on those. Then, then the facility can't force you to do it because you've never had that STR signed off. Just a thought.
A process perspective is a scope of practice and drug table. Just because something is approved does not need a medical director, you have to allow that. So we don't necessarily need to make. So if it's part of your training as critical care paramedics, I guess that would be my question. If you're trained in these devices as part of your training, then we should consider adding it to scope of practice. As a medical director, you can elect to not approve your paramedics doing anything or E M T that is on the scope of practice that is your job as a as a medical director.
Or you could require online medical direction just so that they have that opt out if there's a situation where you say if there's something weird, you call your medical director and they shut it down if they don't think it's safe or something, but there's ways around it.
Yes, I think that would be my only hesitation using the S T R pathway is that that would then kind of creates a little bit of a conflict at times versus say this is part of training, this is what you're experienced with then. I do not have experience with critical care training programs, I'm gonna rely on those that do. But if this is something that paramedics are trained to do, then I would say that this then becomes a different oversight question, oversight perspective. And people feel like I I don't want to prove my paramedics doing that. That's absolutely the medical director's decision to do that.
Right. And I actually, I like that that point of view because um I agree because they may be trained in it, but to Brian's point, you know, I'm like, I'm fine with the one of my flight crews taking a flight from Phoenix from Sholo, you know, in an hour, but I'm not comfortable with a ground crew throwing them on a a balloon pump and taking them down through the canyon for four hours. So I think it would, I, you know, I think maybe Amber, whoever said it was, you know, leave it up to the medical director and it could potentially be case by case and or just they maybe all approve ground, I mean, flight, but not ground.
Number sixteen, just wordsmithing for future proofing, just to add et cetera at the end.
A lot of these things kind of are S T Rs in reality. I mean, you get so you have to get extra training through your agency to run these machines.
The machine.
You don't get it in school. So I mean, they are kind of S T Rs in a way, but. I know, agreed.
Any further discussion before we move on on lines fourteen, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen? It was recommended that line sixteen that Shelley has added, which is after Impella, it says comma, et cetera, just to make sure that we aren't prudent of any additional devices that may come out. All right, the next section is pretty standard there. Um. We go to the next page. I think I will go to lines eighteen and nineteen. So line eighteen is use slash monitoring of infusion pump for agents administration during in a facility transport. The presumption is that is what a critical care paramedic's role is. So that would just be a check mark, does not need to be S T R. And then line nineteen is looking at approving, we have S T Rs for table three, which is kind of your expanded in a facility and hospital based drug profiles. Uh, again, each agency's medical director decides what medications or paramedic can utilize, but the the presumption is that a critical care endorsement trained paramedic would have the training to be able to just use that as long as a paramedic approves. So it would not necessarily be S T R, could be a check mark for that. The additional scope and training. Questions, comments about those? Uh, line twenty one, I just realized we do not have, this is immunizations, which you can see there is an asterisk next to for uh E M T I's of paramedic, and that is because there is specific training, R nine twenty five five oh five is outlined on page one. So I guess from a clarification perspective, I think we would need to add that asterisk to that check mark for critical care endorsement. And then have that. All right. And then the next conversation piece is line twenty two, which is thrombolytics. Uh, this is, I think, one that we just need to discuss a little bit further. Uh, so this currently is a S T R for a regular paramedic. Um, what is being proposed, which we will get to potentially on the agenda, will be an adjustment to the the S T R for paramedics, but at least from the critical care perspective. Uh, this is being marked currently as proposed as a check mark.
Clarifying question, because this is this like saying suddenly a medication here, because I feel like we weren't talking specifically. Medications before.
This is the type of kind of like a, I it's not, we consider thrombolytic like as a medication, but it's kind of a type. That's how it's always been on scope was listed that way. So I know it's kind of unusual because the others are.
The thing to clarify, guys, was concerning.
I want to do really like thrombolite, like the action of, yes, thrombolite. Like we're not listing like T P A or T N K, this is kind of the ability to utilize one of those types of medications.
This is weird.
These are, many of these have been on here for a very, very long time. So the proposal is to have that as a check mark for critical care endorsement with the presumption that a critically care trained paramedic has that training would not need the S T R. Everyone comfortable with that? Don't see any any concerns. Okay.
Dr. Bradley.
Yes.
Why uh why do we have a green tag for the uh critical care paramedic? What's the meaning of the Xs that are highlighted blue there?
Probably editing error.
Oh, okay. So I, yeah, just check marks all the way across there, I would think.
Isn't the, isn't that specifically for like the the preloaded Narcan type device? So.
It should be check marks all the way across. Yes. But this is uh because we're adding, we're adding in that option for E M Rs, we needed to add that line. We did not have that line on there. So that's why it's a new line. So yes, it was just I couldn't easily do check marks when I was practicing this. All right. Thank you for capturing that. Yes, those should all be checks across. Okay. All right. Uh, so going down to section E. Um, so number one and two, just again, it's approved for paramedics to do accessing ports and central line monitoring. So that was just included there. If you scroll down to number eight on this page, which is initiation and maintenance of blood product transfusion. So this is something where we try to find a way to best address this in terms of if we get this on a scope of practice table this way, then we can have a drug table that lists that. And that would be specific to it. So it allows us to kind of maneuver this a little bit more easily. So this is saying a critical care paramedic could do transfusion of blood products. And then on table, on the drug table separately, we would list the actual blood product and it would be on there for the column. So we would need it in both. But this is how we are trying to accomplish that for critical care paramedic.
I think this is awesome. This is such a cool step forward with trauma care.
And then the next line, line nine, I just want to make sure. So we have currently for IV initiation ultrasound added IV in a hospital setting. Uh, this was one where we had, this was a S T R currently for paramedics because that's not part of standard scope of practice and training. Uh, the presumption again is that this is something a critical care endorsement would get trained in. I just want to make sure people agree with that statement or do we need it to be S T R?
Is the question to be S T R for the paramedic, like the critical care paramedic?
Yes, it'd be a check mark.
Is there an uh clarified care clarification? There we go. Uh, does it need to be in hospital set? Oh, there's another one farther down that has ultrasound listed. Cool, thank you.
Thank you for that, Matt. So I just want to make sure everyone's good with this as just being a check mark for critical care endorsement. All right. And so like number three at the bottom there, we just continue blood chemistry analysis approved for paramedics would be a clue.
Ask a question about that. I'm sorry. What is the difference between blood chemistry analysis three and then point of care and laboratory sampling number twelve? In the past, the direction we were given was that both or previously blood chemistry analysis counted as a point of care device. We could use a point of care device.
Point of point of care and chemistry are two different things.
Sorry.
There are two different things. So point of care is um different than a blood chemistry machine. The point of care is being run by essentially the person that's drawing that blood versus a blood chemistry is, you know, typically something that gets run through an actual analyzer machine. I am not a laboratory expert, so if someone wants to.
Yeah, I guess my my question is, in the past, it was interpreted that blood chemistry analysis would include an I stat, for example, in the field. Right. So I'm just wondering, like, if that's what blood chemistry analysis included in the past, what is the, what's the difference between that and point of care and number twelve?
And that interpretation, I I don't know when that was given. It's gotta be.
Bobrow. Yeah. So that's what, that's all my questions.
Is the point of care uh and laboratory sampling imply venipuncture to get the uh to get the sample versus simple analysis of the blood chemistries? What's their I'm not sure what's their name to you. I I don't know. Just maybe that's why both might be indicated or.
But it doesn't. So is is a blood glucose a point of care testing?
Uh, it's. I I think that the part of it is a lot of, you know, some of the flight crews are carrying like point of care troponins, point of care lactates, things like that. So I think that that's where that came from and the chemistry analysis is just an old one. So I think really what we were talking about for critical care medics is it's usually they're only doing it for troponins. Maybe A B Gs or those type of things, but usually it's uh troponins or lactates.
Well, so it's check mark for paramedics right now for blood chemistry analysis. So does that include I stats and other things like that? Because that's what that's the interpretation in the past. I can.
I said it's never been in the paramedic.
I've never had the question come to me, no.
I didn't believe that point of care testing was included in the scope.
There'd be blood chemistry analysis, though.
I don't know if that was interpreted previously. Would there be any reluctance into just adding that a check mark for paramedic for number twelve?
I mean, that would be fine, too.
I I don't think you could add as a check mark because most paramedics are not trained in that.
Yeah.
So kind of just, you know, again, sticking with the, we we make notes of the additions to the paramedic, but just stick with the critical care. I guess, do we feel that it is unclear if we have line three, just from the critical care endorsement? Line three, which states blood chemistry analysis and then line twelve, point of care laboratory sampling and interpretation. That's a little bit more inclusive.
I think until you open up the paramedic scope to say we're gonna remove this and load this, I think it'd be key bone. And then if you decide later, we go back in the S, we remove three entirely to add S T R.
I think we have to. There's a question to check. Can we add S T R for paramedic? There are products available for point of care testing when we address paramedic? Yeah.
Well, we could add S T R for paramedic. Is that what you said? Sorry.
In the future. I think we have to have it on.
Notice.
Yeah.
Notice. You can find that by.
Uh, so, okay, so it sounds like twelve of line three people are okay with. So then if we go to line eleven, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just um move down to line nine first. Urinary catheterization, this is a S T R that was added. Again, the presumption is that this is gonna be something they're trained in a critical care endorsement. So that would be just a check mark. And then line eleven is arterial blood sampling. Again, presumption, this is part of critical care training. If they're doing an art line that they could get arterial blood sample, make sure that's part of the training. Uh, point of care and laboratory sampling, I think we've covered that. Uh, external fetal monitoring, question I had, and this is a standard part of critical care training. Yes.
This one is just sort of glanced over. I would recommend that this and the isolate are S T Rs. Because there's not enough time in the critical care training or the endorsement to be just vetting as a checkbox that anyone can just do this without additional training and sign off. Um, it's something we send our flight teams for a hundred and eight hours of clinical time after they've even had the endorsement. So it's interpretation, um, understanding.
For the external fetal monitoring? Okay.
External and the isolate as well for.
That. So for line thirteen and fourteen.
Those are still gonna end up being, your organization has them and you get trained on or your organization doesn't have them.
Though, right? Like, we're not training folks on Impella in the general courses either, though. So, I mean.
You're gonna have your local agency is gonna have the equipment or not, and they're gonna train you on it.
Yeah, I don't know about making it an S T R versus a check. I would leave it as a check and understanding that your agencies have that. You're not training if your agencies have that equipment necessarily, but there there's a lot of stuff in here that you wouldn't necessarily hit in your course before you set for your exam, but you're gonna learn through your agency. So I don't, I'd be hesitant to make a lot of S T Rs in here.
And that's it. Sorry.
I was gonna say the other component with the S T Rs, because I remind him periodically, is that the bureau has to maintain like training curriculum or outlines or any S T Rs, which has been problematic because there isn't necessarily the the staff to create those and maintain those and also keep them updated versus something where as an agency, if your medical director, you're allowing someone to do these pretty advanced procedures that if you had the equipment, you were trained, you're putting it on that. So but it's so just to make sure that everyone's comfortable with external fetal monitoring and neonatal isolate, sounds like that is something that requires significant additional training. Uh, but it sounds like support more for leaving those as a check mark. Is that correct? I see some head nods and a thumbs up from Jason.
What about ultrasound?
And then ultrasound, that is one that is was kind of added in as just an S T R. Uh, just because I think it's pretty broad. What does ultrasound encompass? The request that came forward was a critical care paramedic having the ability. I don't know what's taught as a standard, if anything, in a critical care program is any ultrasound taught as at a standard part of training. I see some, no.
Standard training, but again, if your agency had it, you would need to be trained on how to use your machine and what what skills you were allowed or not allowed to to do with it. Just similarly with number fifteen, I think it's a future proofing. While right now it may not be a standard. It's it will be hard for me not to see it become more prevalent over the years, right? Like, we already have more and more data showing its benefit. It's kind of a place to step the scope for everybody at some point. I think future proving ourselves with an S T R there is the right move.
But I don't think it's any more difficult than learning some of these things that we're including in this scope anyways. It's not more difficult to have that. It's how to troubleshoot Impella.
Well, is that back in the corner? Did Carol have to provide a curriculum for ultrasound? If you have an S T R there?
Yes, but if it's not taught, I think uh that's something that not taught as a standard. Why did you have your hand up?
Um, I hate to bring, I hate to bring this up now, but to the topic of the urinary catheterization. To say that that's they've been trained in that, I'm not so sure because right now it's my understanding that you can go challenge a critical care paramedic test. You can study up and go challenge it. And if you pass it, then you're got board certified, right? And that's true of F P C, right? You just study, you can just study for it. You could. You could. No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about how, you know, how hard it is because I've heard that it's a very, like F P C in particular is very hard test. But they can. I think it's making an assumption, though, to say that they have been because this is, this one is very benign in equipment compared to some of these other ones we're talking about in terms of equipment. I'm not saying to make it an S T R. It's just there to be a perception that that means these people have necessarily been trained in.
With R S I or any of these, right? Like, they're just not, I mean, there is no skills component to the exams. And that's for any of the skills.
Oh, yeah, this is, it's like an annual competency as well. Like, this is again, something else within the agencies, though. If we're gonna be performing this procedure, we have to have the training and the understanding, like the risk of C O D or other um and other secondary consequences may happen from that. So they're not just signed off.
and other secondary consequences may happen from that. So they're not just signed off who was.
There's a lot of medical directors out there. So, just saying.
Jason?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what, you know, I can understand the concerns, but there are a lot of medical directors, but I don't know how many medical directors are doing actual critical care medical direction. So I think there is a little bit of a difference there. And you just know if you're signing up to do critical care medical direction, you're, you're very invested in your crews. I mean, at least I would assume so. Otherwise, you're not gonna be practicing very long.
And then there was a question in the chat. Is there a reason ultrasound needs to be STR? This is just for critical care endorsement only. So this is not for the general paramedic. And the, the reason it sounds like in the room is that this is not part of any standard training currently for critical care paramedics. That answer your question, Kyle? So that is the last of the page of the critical care endorsement. Uh, so just to quickly summarize on page one, uh, number seven, line seven is updated to retransport ventilation with advanced modes. There's no parentheses after that. Administrative correction on page five, line eight for intranasal unit dose pre-measured, just checkmarks across instead of Xs for clarification. Uh, next page at the top for immunization, line 21, we're at asterisk next to the checkmark. And thrombolytics are at, at this checkmark in line 22. And then the rest are as initially shared with the meeting objectives.
One exception, it'd be page four for 16, just a addition of the word excited.
Oh, thank you.
Clarify, for thrombolytics for paramedics, it's STR with a line slash through it. Is that a?
That is on the another agenda for discussion. So this is critical care endorsement column only at this point. So.
Gotta keep saying that.
I'm worried about the STR for sound, because I think that might limit utilization of those if there wasn't a curriculum in place per the bureau, per standard practice. So I just be in favor.
And I think if the agency has it, they're gonna have to train on it. So I, I.
You shall form it if you can.
I'm not opposed to it. I agree with that. If you have the tool, use it. If you don't have it, you don't have it. Make it a checkmark. Is there any, like, I'm just thinking aloud, is there any, what's the downside of making it a checkmark, I guess? Just thinking aloud.
I'm not sure, Jason, what your thumbs up was for.
No, that, yeah, that, yeah, I agree. That it's a beautiful day outside and everything's good. No, I agree. I think it probably should just be a checkmark. Because I think if you have it, you're gonna train it for whatever you need, whether that's do a cardiac ultrasound, IV placement, whatever it happens to be.
All right, taking that edit. That sounds like more votes to correct that to a checkmark for critical care endorsement.
Sounds good.
Anyone with heartache against that? All right. So I think we are ready for a vote on that one. That took less time than the EMR one.
Motion to approve with changes for PMP.
Thank you.
Uh, so for PMD, uh, we'll take this one to a vote. Uh, all in favor of the proposed changes, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, motion passes for PDR. Sorry.
All right. If I get a motion for MDC?
And then we'll just stay up.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone opposed? Please say nay. Any extensions? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, everyone on the phone, if you can either type it in the chat or speak up, please. So we have that for the record.
Aye. Aye.
Thank, thank you. All right, so we are going to go to line three. I, uh, get a motion up. Have you got your PMV motion?
Where are we at? Oh, C. Okay, great. Okay, so for PMV, for item C, uh, AMCT, adjust section D, do I have a motion to discuss?
Yes.
I get a MDC motion? All right, in a second. All right. Uh, so this is a relatively small one. This is just to go ahead and go to item D. Uh, so this was to add intranasal route unit dose pre-measured. This is again, should have been the checkmarks instead of Xs. So you can see the highlighted blue as blue. And then to remove under the paramedic section for thrombolytics, the STR is being proposed. Since we now have a critical care endorsement to do that.
So this would essentially be saying that if the patient's being, they can't give it or maintain it. I, I guess I, because it's a drug in there, I'm still kind of a little just like, kind of understand it better. Okay. So patient got thrombolytics for MI in the facility. Now we're saying that only a paramedic critical care can transport them?
No, that's a separate table.
No, no, it's running.
If it's running, it's running.
That's what I'm clarifying.
That would be, it's not on the current transport list. So they can't take it. They, they can't take it anyway. But in this case, they would be able to, the critical care paramedic would be able to.
Do, looks like not critical care paramedic.
Right.
So I think the thought behind this is that since we are adding a critical care endorsement to the state, that this is type of patient that probably needs a paramedic with critical care endorsement and training. Florian Stone agrees.
Spam.
Yes, Brian.
Is there anybody that's doing this? I'm not aware of anybody in the state that's letting paramedics do thrombolytics anyway, so.
I mean, we would, we would have to pull a, a list of medications, try to pick around that's possible, but we don't necessarily know. But those are two relatively straightforward items. Any further discussion on those? All right, do you wanna do your PMV?
All right, vote for PMVs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Say nay. And are there any abstaining? Great, motion passes for all.
And for MDC, any opposed? Say nay. Any extensions? All is in favor, say aye. All right, that is approved as well. All right. That would be completion of our scope of practice component. So, uh, thank you, everyone. That is, we are now gonna move to item D, which is discussing that it approved draft table one, AMCT blood box to add column for EMRs. I get a motion from your PMV motion?
Oh, sure. Can I get a motion to discuss my PM?
From MDC, please?
Motion.
Thanks. All right, first and a second. Thank you. Uh, so for these, for the EMR perspective, the request is to consider adding, uh, three items. Uh, the first is the atropine auto-injector on page two, the way it's in the printed version. Uh, on page three, nalosone. And then page four, prelodoxin auto-injector.
Why those two? Why atropine?
That is the national scope. So that was on the national scope. Uh, so that was just one to consider when we pulled the national scope.
Yeah.
So, kind of like these.
It's usually for some.
Exposures. Such a turian collection like, oh.
Yeah.
That's just a question, cause I don't know. Epi auto-injectors, are those anywhere uh, EMR curriculum?
I believe only, I want the scope of practice from, these were specifically listed here.
Intramuscular auto-injector.
And then they had the medications. Let's see, if we can find that on here. National scope. So for the EMR, they have the auto-injector that they have listed. Thank you. Our auto-injector ingredients for chemicals such hazardous materials exposure and then use of opioid antagonist auto-injector for suspected opioid overdose.
So I'd be in favor of adding auto-injectors for EMRs.
Including epi? So yeah, I would agree.
If it's already there, add the auto-injectors.
Totally. Intramuscular specifically. And also for the line below it, cause line below it specifically says IM for enflaxis. So we're all talking about.
No, that's. You would actually have to draw up.
Oh, that's rated?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ignore me. Epinephrine auto-injector with an A.
This is Erin O'Connor. I guess I'd also just point out that cyano kit on this list is a trade name. And I believe we should probably use the generic name hydroxocabalamin.
Oh, Josh, sorry. Didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
No problem. Um, I'll do the, um, the auto-injector kits first for the anticholinergic syndrome. These are not widely available anymore. It used to be that these were provided to a lot of EMS agencies free. Um, there are no more federal funds to support them. So, uh, Tupam and atropine are actually not all that common anymore. Um, I think most systems around the state use them exclusively in their hazmat trucks. Um, the other setting that they're used for is of course auto-administration. When you're responding to a special event with the high risk. Um, I am somewhat concerned that an EMR with 70 hours of training may not be able to recognize the signs and symptoms of an organophosphate exposure, a nerve agent exposure, those, those types of things. Um, I wonder if we want to consider removing that. Oh, and I will also add, um, this is for administration to somebody else, um, not self-administration. Um, self-administration is different. Uh, so this would imply that an EMR is responding to a mass casualty incident um, and giving, identifying and treating organophosphate or nerve agent toxicity.
Given the lack of availability, that's, I don't know. I disagree with Josh, that you're training on something that's probably never going to be available to them.
This is Dan. While you're looking, I agree with Josh that regardless of whether it's available or not, I think that's a bad idea.
So then, Dr. Connor, not to put you on the spot, but as one of our resident toxicologists, um, kind of your thoughts in terms of the ease of and whether or not this is something to consider or just keep it at the EMT and above level?
No, I agree with Dr. Gaither's, you know, raising of the issue. I think for me, the only environment I can see this really playing out is if we have like national stockpiles that need to be mobilized during a mass casualty event in which we need all hands on deck to, you know, once we've identified that a nerve agent is involved and we need, um, all hands on deck and boots on the ground to administer, um, an antidote in a mass casualty situation. That's the only place I could see that this should be utilized by someone in the EMR, um, training arena.
Thank you, Erin. There are still, to the question in the chat, the KEMPAC stockpiles, there are still out there. Those are generally in larger jurisdictions that are going to have, uh, EMT and paramedic responders. Again, based on just kind of the, the geographic area where we're likely to see, uh, EMRs mostly used, to be in a facility response. So, uh, where the most, the KEMPAC that I'm aware of are very large jurisdictions.
Then it sounds like removing it wouldn't be of much consequence either, right? Taking it out of the EMR.
Uh, yes, they can be moved to areas of need, but I think, uh, these are not quick and easy to mobilize and move. And I think you would have responders moving with those KEMPACs, I guess, with that.
One way or the other, because if you're gonna take that tack to, then, that they could be used maybe in a mass casualty, and they are gonna have KEMPACs or, or the larger ones, it would seem like you would want an A for that atropine and the Tupam. Cause they may, rather than just, uh, rather than just atropine or take it all away. But it seems like if you're going to, if you're not going to take the atropine one, that you should have the atropine with the Tupam. Thinking about that consideration of, of having hands, but.
So, yeah, currently the proposed version has A or blue for atropine and Tupam. So I think the discussion is for those being included or not. Oh, it's so, it's, it's separate on page four. We have prelodoxin. A lot of exceptions if you go to page four.
Oh, but you still have it for when they're combined to.
I see what you're saying. You're saying it should be combined as well.
If you're going to take that consideration into consideration, then they should be able to do the, the atropine and the Tupam combined auto-injector. I'm not opposed to taking them out, but I question, then since it's in the scope of practice and it just says auto-injectors and they're not regulated, what do you do with that anyway?
So I hear a vote from Amber to support removing atropine and prelodoxin auto-injectors. Uh, I see in the chat, Tupam not available. Do-Do kits are out there, very expensive, and you have to buy them a case of 300.
That's your spare.
Thank you, Doug.
I mean, this is Erin O'Connor. Again, I guess the issue that Dr. Gaither raises is the, is the crux of it, right? I mean, do you want an EMR effectively diagnosing and intervening on, um, cholinergic crisis and utilizing this? And I think that's where, um, you know, we have to answer that question to know whether we take them all away or take, or leave them all as. You know, we have to answer that question to know whether we take them all away or take or leave them all as. Available.
Well, and let me build on that. I agree with Erin. I think there's also the complexity of dosing. I would challenge everyone on the call and in the room to recall the dosing of the auto-injectors. For a colinergic syndrome. Is it one, two, or three? Which patients get which? If we can't recall it as advanced providers who are very invested. I am suspect that our EMRs will not be able to figure that out either.
It's going to be problematic if this is, is there another term that's going to be used versus the drug box? Because EMRs are not going to fall under that category.
Ruth Ann, are you still on the line?
Until the legislation changes.
I see the. Goes to Ruth Ann, who's actually still.
Look at her argument at the table. Name is what it is. And. Require maybe a statutory change or something.
Yeah, definitely need statutory change.
It sounds like in terms of the medications, I'm hearing more in favor for not including priloxine or atropine auto-injectors. Is that the consensus?
Yes.
And then also EMR may not be under online medical direction. I see that in the chat. Thank you. All right. And then if we go back now to the conversation on the lock zone. On page three for the auto-injector. This is. Preful atomizer or auto-injector. Again, this would be something that is a commercial product. That the layperson can use as well. So I think that is a reasonable one to include. So we're admitting to remove the A from. What about epi? Dr. Gaither first, and we'll come back to that.
No, I was going to move on to epi, so.
Perfect timing.
All right. This is not a big deal, but my understanding of the response model for an EMR. Is that they would never be responding alone. They would always be with an EMT or on another interfacility transport with an advanced provider. So, so my, the Narcan makes sense, right? Something to me that that's totally reasonable. Our cops are using Narcan. Why would we not? Using an epi auto-injector, there's not a huge downside to it. But why would we not have their EMT partner give that? Why do we need an EMR to give this when they're the second person? And I'll, I'll add to that. This is not a cheap thing, right? We added in the intramuscular epi for the reason that these are very, very expensive auto-injectors.
All right, Brian's hands up.
You're breaking up two different things here. There's EMRs that. That, that are going to be allowed to do certain things under a CON. That does not restrict them from any working for any other volunteer fire department and responding alone. So I don't think you can assume that there's going to be another person there that's an EMT necessarily. That end of it is not regulated, is totally not regulated outside the CON. Criteria that was established by the legislature, so.
I think that sounds like that is in the chat, we have EMRs running calls. The only other EMRs, they don't always have EMTs.
You could see a scenario where they're. Running with an EMT and the EMT is busy doing other life-saving skills. Here, give me auto-injector.
Or, or just they're on their own, as Amy's pointed out. I mean. It's potentially a life-saving medication and to get it would require a medical director to write a prescription to purchase it. So there would be some amount of training that hopefully that person would have undergone to recognize and administer.
Some amount of oversight.
And some amount of oversight. To me, there's not a whole lot of downside, even if they're administering it. To someone that's not truly an anaphylaxis. As long as they don't stick it through their thumb, they're probably doing okay.
No. Consensus, which direction? Do we include epi auto-injector?
I think yes. That's just me.
See, three yeses in the room. Fourth, yes. Fifth, yes. Sixth, yes. Yes. Seven. All right. Yes, I'm seeing thumbs up and head nods. Okay. So it sounds like the consensus for the drug table for EMRs, and then we will, after this, take a lunch break for anyone who's dying. I promise we're going to take a short break here. So we are not going to include atropine auto-injector. We are going to add epi auto-injector. For EMR, we are going to include the A for EMR for naloxone, and we will not add priloxine auto-injector.
It is ready for a vote for PMD. With those summaries, all in favor, say aye. Say nay. And are there any extensions? Motion passes.
MDC, any, any opposed? Say nay. Any extensions? All in favor, say aye. That is approved. We are going to take, for those on the line, it is 12 o'clock on the dot. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? You're going to put the mute on in the room here. We'll keep the chat open. There is food here. So while the committee members get food first, and then everyone else will grab some food as well. And then we will reconvene in about 10 minutes to give people a chance to use the restroom and get some lunch.
All right. Go ahead and keep going with the meeting components.
Thank you to our lunch sponsor, Dr. Bradley.
I have a taxpayer, just to clarify, to get my taxes.
No germit here.
Clarification purposes. All right, we are going to keep moving on the agenda. We are actually doing quite well. So we are going to move to item E on the agenda. Discuss and amend approved graph table one E M C T drug box to add column for critical paramedic with critical care endorsement. If you would like to do the P M D motion.
Yes, can I get a motion from P M T to discuss the proof? Oh, wait a second. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, first and a second, I heard. And then for M D C. Right, we have a first and a second for M D C. Thank you. So for critical care endorsement, obviously, anything that was an A for paramedic, we continue the A across. We'll kind of move down, just kind of go through page one. I don't think there's anything on page one that looks unusual or questionable for that. If we go to page two. Dr. O'Connor did mention, I don't know, Shelley, because it's a Sianic that we have the brand name, we should have the trade name for that. The Dr. Jacob Alvin. But it's, no, for the Sianic. Highlight that.
So registered trade.
Um, what was that request?
Registered trade.
It is a brand name, we typically use. All right. We continue moving down.
Dr. Bradley?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question? So everything that the new stuff on table four, that's in addition to what is listed here on table one, is that, is that correct? Okay, because that stuff on table four is not specific to inter facility or nine one one, it's just drugs that would be approved. Okay, thank you.
Technically, just, we wanted to make sure we, it was kind of a clear thing. I think we have kind of two options, although I think the kind of having it on both tables makes it more clear, just to make sure if someone is unsure if they're a critical care paramedic, they get to do everything that is the paramedic scope. So that's why we just added that endorsement. So there's no questions. So that's why I've basically agreed down for all of them. And again, as described in the above, this is as approved by your agency's medical director. So if your medical director says, oh, I don't want my paramedics giving this drug, then you would not be administered a drug. Yes, Brian?
Just one thing on normal saline optional one liter bag. We have an A for the critical care paramedic, but up above where it's L R optional one liter bag. You just, that was only designed for, to cover those, that line was only designed to cover E M Ts with S T Rs for IVs starting. Make it optional for them. So one place you added the A and one place you didn't, but it does need an A in normal saline. Optional one liter.
So I see it's four from the bottom of page three, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so four on the bottom for page three, you're saying we do not.
Yeah, four from the bottom.
Saline that we do not need that optional one.
No.
Shelley's, oh, so sorry. Looks like this. Optional one liter. That one will just be taken off. Any other discussion items or corrections?
I think. Table four, are we also on doing that at the same time, or is that the prior one?
Uh, table four will be separate. Yes, Dr. O'Connor?
Just point a clarification, NorEpi, I P, or dopamine, why, why are those in the same box and? What's the I P?
Um, the I P is for infusion pump. And the reason why those are in the same boxes that there's, they're both optional.
You have to have one.
Well, they're optional.
Yeah, yeah. So you could have, you don't have to have them both.
You don't, yes. So you don't have to have both pressors, you could have one or the other.
Or none.
Or none.
Okay, yeah, I guess just to avoid confusion of the two different pressors, I would think you'd have them listed distinctly in separate rows, but. Just one. Clarification.
Kind of unusual way we have the drug table set up. We have kind of categories of drugs, like we'll have three benzos together, we have morphine and butanol. It's kind of four options. So that's kind of why, the same thing with the steroids as well, we have dexamethasone or methylprednisolone. Any further discussion? This is a pretty simple for the critical care endorsement, really just making sure we have it very clear that they give any of the meds a regular paramedic cap.
All right, hearing no additional comment, I'll take for a P M D vote. All those in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? And any abstentions? All right, passes for P M D.
All right, for M D C, any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. We will move to the next action item, which is item F, discuss amended approvals, mask people for agents eligible for administration by paramedic with critical care endorsement. This is a abstract table.
All right, so for P M, which, you want to do table three last? All right, so for item F, for P M D, do I have a motion to discuss amendment approves?
Nope. For M D C, if I can get a motion. First and second in the row, thank you.
Very small thing here, Delaudid is also a trade name.
I'm sorry, I missed the people with P M D.
Matt was the first. Thank you. So this is a new proposed drug table. So this is to try to make it clear that anything that is on the paramedic drug table is also going to be approved for critical care endorsement. But we also recognize that someone who's working in critical pair setting may be responding both on a nine one one call or potentially in a facility. And so there may be medications for someone with critical care endorsement regardless of the setting that they're working in. Uh, this list is to try to kind of address that population and that clinical scenario. So that is what is being proposed here as table four. So this is a new drug table that would be kind of added. You will see here number one, which I think was kind of the big one, which is why we added that to the scope of practice, which is the transfusion of blood products. This would then allow for critical care endorsed paramedic to administer blood products both in the nine one one and in a facility early enough. So I will open it up to that, but that's a little bit of background and basis of why we are proposing this format.
You can't propose adding things to this right now. Right now, we're just approving or not approving the drugs.
I think we could.
As an amendment, yeah.
Yeah. We could potentially add Haldol to this.
So that is a proposal from the public, so we would need someone, a committee member to make a friendly proposal amendment.
Make it a friendly amendment. To add.
Oh, Haldol.
Haldol. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hello, E E R I.
Thank you.
And then Delaudid should actually be hydro morphine.
I can see your hand up.
I was only gonna add, if we're gonna add Haldol, we should probably do droperidol at the same time, simply because the, they alternate on shortages frequently, you can get one but not the other, they're very similar.
Droperidol is suggested to be added in addition to Haldol for the shortages.
Uh, if you could go ahead and any drug names that you are proposing, maybe put those in the chat, so Shelley.
Another question, I mean, looking at this, some of the medications that are being proposed are things like used for hypertensive emergency dissection, things like that. Nitropresside is one of those medications would be, want that one as well.
How are you, I mean, you've got to operate, you've got to.
We, I only say that, we had just used it last week on a, that's a, they needed a third agent, so. But that's it.
I remember back in the nineties, you said, give him a ride on the pride.
Did I miss it? Is propofol not over there anywhere? There's a lot of inter facility transport with.
Propofol is on the, on the other transport.
What about like prestex? Whatever the generic is.
Are you missing any that were mentioned? I see in the chat, we have a recommendation from Jason to hydralazine. All right. So again, keep in mind, we still will have table three. Now, as a group decides they want to scrap that, but I don't. Aaron, go ahead.
Yeah, well, can you just clarify the blood products, if it's not for inter hospital transfer, how would blood products be administered, I guess? Because wouldn't they have to get the blood products from a hospital?
So there are some.
Are carrying their own blood products.
So this would be like for currently mostly flight units, so currently a lot of flight units are carrying blood products, which at this point only the R N can administer. Uh, but if they're running a scene call, this would allow critical care endorsed trained paramedics to administer the blood products. Yes.
Clearly, our paramedics have to be the co-signer, but they're not able to start the administration. So at least a lot of parity in that.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry, slow to unmute. I, I just needed a clarification, I guess. This table that we're looking at now is for pre-hospital initiation, not inter facility transport, is that correct?
Oh.
Both, yeah.
So is there redundancy here on some of these that are also on the, the inter facility?
Yes. Sorry, yeah, that is a good point. So there, unless we are looking to potentially eliminate the inner facility, which I don't think that would be the goal, there is some overlap. So this would be things that are not on the inner facility or things that we would perceive they needed for a nine one one response. So when you have some units that are critical care frame unit, they may respond both nine one one and in a facility. There wouldn't be some confusion as to, I can use these drugs on these calls, but not these drugs on these other calls.
Yeah, and, and I was really thinking along the lines of the anti-hypertensives. I, I can't think of too many scenarios in which you would respond to a nine one one call and start multiple calcium channel blockers, other anti-hypertensives. And I think all those are on the inner facility transport list anyways.
Maybe why don't we start at the top of the list and then kind of go down and then we'll, and then see what to, we can kind of cross reference the table three, because I think that is a good point is. This is to allow that, but if it's on the inner facility, you know, they would be using that. So. Blood products, it sounds like this is definitely what we would want on here. For pain control, the request was to add hydro morphine, which that would be allowing it for the nine one one setting. Uh, esmolol is on here. And we do not have it on the current table three.
Can you help us, just because I don't have it referenced, what are the other anti-hypertensives on table three?
Uh, let's see, let's go down.
I don't.
I think it's just like technically.
I think this one would be the only one, I think. Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, the inner facility transport table.
That is, um, that is it currently.
Got it.
So I, I guess to the point that Josh was making. I think, I think Josh, if I'm understanding this, you're kind of saying, are we putting this on a drug box to be used in the nine one one or in a facility? But maybe would some of these be better suitages to be added to table three for the inner facility? Is that what you're proposing or not?
Yeah, that was where I was going. And the real question is, some of these anti-hypertensives are fairly benign, others that we may need invasive monitoring. Um, on an inner facility transport, starting in A line and doing monitoring is fine. In the field, starting in A line and initiating these therapies is probably not something at least I would be comfortable with.
So is your suggestion to put, as like an example, esmolol, take it off of this list and add it as a critical care endorsement only to the table three.
Exactly. And I would propose nicardipine is probably the most commonly used anti-hypertensives. So we leave nicardipine here and move all the others to the inner facility. And I'm totally open to discussion, that's just a suggestion.
That's a good question. What's the purpose of having this separate paramedic with critical care list versus putting them on if it's a nine one one call, putting it on that list? Putting it on the inner facility list and putting it on.
One with limited to use only during inner facility transports, and this list, it could be used for either.
Right.
Initiation on the.
But like, the paramedic box list is for nine one one only.
No, no, this is in a facility.
Okay, but we have an inner facility one and we have, okay, I see what you're saying. So you can't.
It's been inherent from the very beginning that if it's on your scope of, regular scope of practice. It's been inherent from the very beginning that if it's on your scope of practice, regular scope of practice list that covers you in either setting. One of the reasons to break out, one of the reasons we originally, well, we had a totally different list with all of them at one point in time that I think worked better, but people didn't understand the key. When we broke it out into two tables, it gets kind of messed up because those end up with some that are in our drug box also, but they get the check mark for requiring an infusion pump, and that's why they're on the separate list, but it's always been inherent that if it's in my drug box, I can take, do it anywhere. The question is whether it requires an infusion pump, and that's why we had to have those on table, the table three to identify which one of those required IP. So by, by being on here, they can do it anywhere. Since this is eligible for administration.
And I think to the point that Josh brought up, with some of these medications, are these really gonna be used in a 911 call versus just moving some of them to table three, which is the interfacility, and make it only for critical care, and make it only critical care endorsement for the interfacility?
Why do you need to do that?
I think I heard someone maybe speaking, but I see Dr. O'Connor's hand up, so I will call Dr. O'Connor.
Yeah, I just was gonna comment that. For 911 call, you know.
Brian, sorry, sorry.
No, I guess I'm concerned if we're using this for 911 response, people are gonna be, based on this list, they could preferentially be giving haloperidol or paradol as sedative medications instead of like a benzodiazepine, because benzodiazepines aren't listed here, so. I, you know, and even with hydro morphine over morphine, you know, I'm not understanding what's commonly stocked. I fear, you know, adding to this list without really understanding first, second line approaches is kind of concerning, I guess.
Yeah, I think that would be true for general paramedics. I think for some of these, though, I would be comfortable with a critical care paramedic getting Haldal. I think.
Say, I mean, why do we need to separate them out? Why is it our responsibility to decide what drugs get used in what system? Shouldn't that be left up to the systems and their medical directors?
I think that's what's in rule right now, is that the bureau delineates what's the drug table, so we're trying to make sure that we create this in a manner that provides functionality. So we're not, we're not, we're not changing rule or statute currently, so the goal is to say, okay, let's make sure there's things that we know a critical care unit that does both interfacility and 911 calls, they would need access to blood, or they may need access to medication, that we give them access to those medications.
I'm just saying, I like it left open like this, as opposed to adding tables of saying, this is only used for 911 system, this is only used for interfacility, this is only used for hospital. It gets confusing.
Yeah, we have the tables currently, so we have to make them fit the way we currently have the rules written.
Historically, the 911 table was medications that the paramedics, EMTs, whatever, were required to carry with them at all times, unless they said optional. That rule has changed with the rule revision in, that went into effect March 7th, which basically says the emergency medical director can decide what drugs, you know, that they have to carry and that are authorized on these tables. This is the first time we're meeting since that rule has been changed. But, you know, and, and Dr. Rice, we've had many, it's like, okay, this drug is required. Now, according to the table, the ambulances are required, it's the medical director that requires what drugs have to be carried. Yeah. Just saw it, Brian, look at Article 10. There's a section in the table that says medications.
And that's, that's ARS or?
That's, that's. In, in the table for the requirements for ambulances, under minimum supplies, minimal equipment and supplies, if you look at J medications, it says agents specified in the table of agents established according to ARS 362204 and available through the department at the website that an administrative medical director may authorize based on the EMCT classification.
I think we're getting off track though, because this has really nothing to do with what the discussion is today in terms of the drug tables, and I think we probably need to make sure we're all entirely on the same interpretation of that.
I guess my point is that, you know, we're, we're looking at drug tables historically that had a regulatory component to it that were requirements, that's the, the 911 drug box table. And that was the difference between interfacility. 911 drug box table with the medications that they actually were carried on the ambulance, whereas the drug box table, or the drug box for inner facilities, were those drugs that the paramedic picked up a patient with those drugs running and could transport with. They didn't necessarily carry them in the ambulance.
We're getting way off track and very different interpretation of what's in rule and what was passed, so let's move beyond that, because I think we need to stick to what is on the agenda for topics, and so I, I think the question that, going back to where we kind of left off of this, which was currently we have table one, we have table three, and we're proposing in table four. The table four that is being proposed is for medications for a critical care endorsed trained paramedic to use in any setting. The statement that was brought up by Dr. Gaither, which I think is a very good statement, is that some of the medications that we're thinking that are on, on the proposed list are unlikely to be initiated in the 911 setting, and they could be simply added to the, to table three with a critical care endorse, under the critical care endorsement column for interfacility. As opposed to medications that could be used in both settings. Blood products would be one, Hydromorphine would be one, haloperidol, droperidol. So kind of delineate, that would be one option, I think, what, what he was proposing. Is that correct, Josh?
Yes.
I, I, I understand that perfectly. Good, a good explanation of that, and I think that's why you purposely went with table four first. And I, I just think that we do kind of a line item analysis. I, I don't know that we need to have Hydromorphine in the field with, we already have morphine and fentanyl, so maybe that goes over to table three, but. So I just think we go line by line on table four and figure out home for those medicines, plus also what has been typed into the chat, we can, we can take up. I can see a system with the, a 911 system where the medical director wants all of these at the, just because all of them are named doesn't mean, doesn't mean they have to all be in that critical care paramedic drug box. It's agents eligible, so basically that means everything's optional in this table, so.
Put it on table three.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, approach it that way, and I would, I would say we have antibiotics as possible agent to administer in the field and on this table four list.
So, I have, or so.
I have a quick question, because I know I'm gonna get this question. Will this drug list apply to those paramedics working in a hospital setting?
No.
It's a different table.
It is a different table, but I'm just saying, the question will be asked. All right.
We're gonna split out the interfacility ones, why have a table four at all? Why not just add some of them to the 911 list and the interfacility list? And some would have both, but why even have a table four? I'm just curious. Why not just break them back out? It would make table one a lot bigger.
I think that there's such a body of them that are unique to the critical care paramedic. I think this was the best way to clarify that universe of what now is different than what has been before. You've got this critical care paramedic, we're endorsing this, we feel that these are appropriate options. Again, for some, you know, medical directors, it's kind of, you know, you don't want somebody just jumping in as a critical care medical director, but just for that person to get an idea of what is endorsed by the state along with the available training curriculum.
You could run these on table three as their own line items on table three, and only the critical care paramedic has an A on it.
Right. You could, you could, I, but I kind of like this personally, and I understand why they did it.
Can we do both? So, you mean, potentially, right? We have a table right now with a whole bunch of lists that are dedicated to critical care paramedics. Can we say minimum supply and delineate where they're going to be used? Pre-hospital setting, interfacility transport, hospital setting, and then also pull them out into the other tables? And so that way, if you're a critical care paramedic, you pull the sheet up and look at it for reference.
Yeah, I'll speak for the bureau, but when you start getting into minimum supply, then there's, that's a regulatory rule or component to that, and the bureau's just endorsing this concept, not regulating it in person.
Sorry.
I would say is a couple of options, is that if the group feels like this is not ready for vote today, we could kind of go get feedback from the group, and we, being some draft versions of drug tables, those would go through our standard process, which would be PMD in July, MBC in September. Kind of, that's the standard process for that. If the group feels like we needed to do a little bit more, figure out what works best. I think our, our goal is to try to make it as easy as possible, recognizing that in my mind, if you have a, especially a critical care paramedic on a flight unit or a unit that's in town on the ground, if a 911 call goes out that they can respond to and provide a higher level of care, and there's no interfacility transports for any reason, that this allows them to, to work at their higher level of care. But currently, if we only had those things on the interfacility drug table, they would not be able to use those because they're not on an interfacility call. So I want to make sure that we allow individuals who have this level of training and departments that are providing these resources, make this readily available, is our goal. Josh, your hand up?
I was just gonna echo what you just said, Gail, that I, I see this as a valuable standalone resource. This is really a separate drug box that's available to critical care paramedics only. It's not an ALS drug box that ALS medics can pick and choose out of. I, I really like keeping it separate. I think it highlights the, the unique skill set and additional training these individuals have.
Well, the group feels like we want to continue down this. We can look at table four and kind of line item on this proposal of what we think should stay on this versus potentially get moved to table three. I did hear Dr. Gamer saying to consider for this group of critical care endorsement antibiotics. I see.
Also add buprenorphine.
Like antibiotics, buprenorphine.
Can general paramedics initiate that?
No.
I retract this paper.
Can I just, just picking your brain, what, what, what settings are you, a gamer apologist? Are you seeing antibiotics for, just like open fractures or something specific? Okay.
But as we discussed when this went to PMD recently, once you put it on the list.
But it's for critical care paramedics, it'd be a smaller subset at least.
Yes, Dr. O'Connor?
I'm very nervous about putting buprenorphine on this list. I mean, precipitated withdrawal is a very real possibility, and how this drug is used needs to be. Man, I just, I would hate to create another problem by precipitating withdrawal on a patient that's hard to then get control of, just by using buprenorphine.
Josh, go ahead.
I was gonna, same, same line, I'm not sure buprenorphine should go on here, different reason. Buprenorphine is really a community paramedic intervention, it's a low acuity call intervention. These are not critical care callouts. Most of the patients who need buprenorphine or would benefit from it really are a BLS level response, ALS level code two response, and they need to have it initiated within a system of care. I don't know that the critical care paramedic is that system of care.
So looking at the list, we have blood products. If we're kind of trying to keep the alphabetical order, I heard a proposal for antibiotics for, again, critical care endorsement. So that would be at the top, the blood products, Hydromorphine. I see some head nods, yeses in the room. Any strong feelings one way or the other on that? Right, and.
Request from Classic Medical, that's where that, that one specifically came from.
Next is Esmolol, so that's kind of the first, if we're talking about the hypertensive medications, is there a desire to keep this on kind of a 911 responding critical care paramedic unit, or does this one, is one that we want to move to the table three? I hear one vote for table three. That a, table three, Matt? Table three, okay.
Table three?
So it's not like Esmolol, table three? I'm gonna just say Kepran, because I can never pronounce the generic version of this. So for anticonvulsive medication, I think this might be something in the rare setting that you've got someone in true status, and you've got a critical care paramedic that this would be beneficial for them to have. I would keep that. Manitol, so let's double check and see, is there a reason in the 911 setting? Oh, sorry, yes, okay. Oh, so I'm, I'm going off the paperless, I'll go, go back to Shelley's list, okay. So Esmolol moved to three. Haloperidol, that was a request to add. Everyone good with that one as a potential agent? And then Droperidol as well, thank you. Josh, go ahead.
Is it possible to do the or for Droperidol or Haldal? I think it would be valuable to have one, but not both. Both increases your risk for dosing errors and side effects.
Agreed. All right. And then, okay, so we've got Droperidol, Haloperidol, Esmolol, we're moving to table three, next on the proposed list was Hydralazine. Table three, I hear a vote for. Yes.
Just backing up to that or, in rule writing, that or doesn't mean or, it means, it means and or. So it doesn't, it does not alleviate having both of those available, just because you separated it out.
No, true. I think just in the style that we've kept our drugs though, groups so that they appear to be on the table together, I think that's the rule writing, they would know. Yeah.
We have antibiotics, right? We're not specifying, we're saying antipsychotics, but here we're specifying two of them, so saying ors, I think.
And I just do want to acknowledge in the chat, the support for critical care paramedic, separate drugs, okay, for those comments, thank you. Just want to make sure, acknowledge those. Yes.
When you say you're moving to table three, we talking 3A or 3B?
3A. That's for interfacility.
So if we leave them on this, they could be used for either, but by moving up, it limits.
To your, to your point, kind of just thinking out loud, right? Like, is there a setting you can envision, like, like response for Hydralazine? Because in my mind, if I'm missing something, tell me, right? It's like we're thinking pre-clampsia, thinking along those lines. I'm hoping no one's diagnosing pre-clampsia in the field, but. No, that's what I'm asking, like, is there any, do you see a need for in the pre-hospital?
I mean, if you get like a, I mean, they have cardine, so I guess they could use cardine, like our, our dialysis hypertensive emergency patients. I know they start nephrologists preferentially like either labetalol or Hydralazine in smaller doses to, you know, depending, they don't like to put something super long acting, because when they go to dialysis, they're, they become really unstable. I mean, they have cardine, so that would be an option, because that would turn off pretty.
I'm with you, I don't want to overcomplicate it, but at the same time, we don't want to have too many things, so that's kind of my thought.
That's the benefit of the medical director interacting with their agency and system.
I'm with it.
I don't know all systems, I say.
Just out of curiosity, we have, we have down for critical care to be used, like, in hospital stuff, right? And I'm not, you know, we don't use critical care medics in our hospital. But if you, if you are, why would you be hesitant to have them start a esmolol drip if they're directed by, why couldn't you use it in a hospital setting if the doctor's saying, start esmolol? But this stuff, like, I'm just not understanding why we're giving them this other stuff but saying, I'm not comfortable with you starting a.
But you could put it on 3B.
But we're not putting it on 3B, but they were saying specifically 3A, so that's why I was asking.
I think just because it hasn't come up yet, that it could go on 3B, too.
That's a good point.
It did come up.
Esmolol.
It did.
3A and 3B.
That's a good point. Could be on a 3B, right? Because you're gonna have.
Right, I don't know why we're separating out 3A, 3B. That was Josh's question, too, is which one, and we're saying.
Why don't we just say we're gonna move to Table 3 and then we'll get to Table 3 next?
I'm fine with that, I just don't, I didn't understand.
Good point. All right. So hydralazine, we'll just say, why don't we just keep it as Table 3? Yeah, that I see in the chat, I just want to make sure we address that. Hydralazine, labetalol, diet south, and the 911 setting for pregnancy hypertension due to pregnant women passing the border.
I would not support it, but I would say yes for inter-facility or in hospital, I would not say for 911.
All right, so hydromorphone, we'll move down the list to that. Everyone good with that one on this list for potential 911 response? All right, next back to Kepra, everyone was good with that. Next one was a request for manitol, I guess I also have kind of a question about this one. Is there a setting in a 911 setting, we would want manitol, probably not enough information known to have that, so I would probably. Yes.
We'll pick here between manitol or 3%, we've transitioned 3%, but responding to head injured individuals. There is a, absolutely a first response, everyone setting before that. Presentation of a creation, other than the hyperventilating the patient, we don't have something that we really have to treat that, especially in the rural setting.
Josh, your hand up.
I would certainly refer to Dan Spate. I am not aware of any literature to support the empiric administration of either manitol or hypertonic saline in the 911 call setting.
That's, that's correct, that's correct. Those, in fact, in both of those settings, the randomized studies have either shown no difference or some were even stopped at, for harm at the interim analyses. So they're still even controversial in the inpatient setting, so. At least for the setting of PBI, there's no, there's more, the first do no harm is at least the overarching issue now. And in fact, there are some studies where it is feared it might have been harm.
All right, so it sounds like that will be taken off of this one. I don't believe it is on Table 3, so I don't know that that one will be moved to Table 3 as opposed to just take the lead.
Manitol falls under diuretics.
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting.
It's just a brand, it's just a category of generic, of diuretics, so it's covered under that.
All right, so next is metoprolol. Thoughts metoprolol, yes for 911 or move to Table 3? So next is nicardapine. All right, next, 2% saline. I think it sounds like, Josh, you wanted to move that to Table 3?
Yeah, I think so.
I was just like.
Next, phenylephrine IV. Anyone other views on that?
Very innovation, small kinds of uses.
And then, let's see, the thrombolytics, that was, the question for this one would be, is there a use for this in the 911 setting? Do we just, I believe that it's on.
Put it in the scope of practice, so where it said thrombolytics on there.
But that's just for any, that's inter-facility as well, so that doesn't mean, it has to be, it's on here for the field to do it, not being STR.
Yeah, the question is, does this belong here or just inter-facilities? I think that's the question.
But that, that's a problem with the way the wording is on the scope of practice then, because it doesn't say thrombolytics and then it would.
It's giving it, but not.
Line.
Right, it's always being worded that way, though, that's not different terminology.
No, I know, but I'm, I'm just saying that I think because it says thrombolytics and it's in the scope of practice, it's not differentiating any settings by saying that. You're just kind of clarifying it on this list, but it already says that on the other list. It specifically says thrombolytics, so I get the, I get that that's the way it's always been worded, but I think that means that you can do it, even if you don't have, even if you didn't put thrombolytics on this list because it says it on the scope of practice specifically, then somebody could be doing it in the field.
I think the interpretation of the scope of practice is thrombolysis, which is not the drug itself, but the act of giving the medication. It's not the, not the medication. I think it's just confusing, but I think what it's meant by the scope of practice list is the, the act of thrombolysis, not the medication.
Oh, but that's not what it says, right? It says initiation.
I get it, but.
Intended for the 15 years that I've been participating in these meetings, is not the medication itself.
Yeah, it's the act of the medication. Forwarding of the way.
So again, the question is, do we, do we want that for a 911 setting? That's really what the question is, is there an indication for a critical care endorsement paramedic, if it's thrombolytic medication on a 911 call?
Be very bold, a critical care paramedic.
Outside of having like a mobile stroke unit or something like this, we don't really have those, so.
I just want to remind all you guys. We still have, when you guys were referring to 911 calls, we still have 911 calls to facilities, to standalone ERs, other things. And so some of these may be useful in those environments based upon your system. I mean, it's one thing to think that all 911 calls are going to residences or car accidents, but that's not the case.
They're the urgent care centers that have already had a CT and now they have a AAA.
The only thing, though, to keep in mind, too, for thrombolytics would be honestly for MIS, I can see that being more beneficial. Like strokes, of course, would laden with who knows what kind of complications and so forth and yada yada, but for MIS, I can see, kind of to your point, your call to an urgent care, if you have a clear STEMI, like. Right, and I'm just trying to think, like, to the point of, like, would that be something useful? I think that's, this is a good example of one, of keeping it on 911, but just having your medical director be quite involved with it. There's no doubt this one's like the big question mark, I feel like that could raise concerns, but in my mind, I see it in MIS being more beneficial at this point. I would be leaning towards keeping it on the 911 side.
I think hesitant to have even a critical care paramedic in this kind of call, to be honest. But so for me, I think I would, I would lean towards the inter-facility list over a critical care paramedic in that call. And again, once it's on the list, we are specifying how it's being used, so.
So the doors, I know, probably just tell them to stay one.
I hear some, some indicate, some discussion about moving that one to Table 3. Thrombolytics or keep it here?
For the reasons Dr. Seidler cited, some systems. I'm just thinking of the 24/7 free standards that Phoenix fired, Surprise fired, you know, my agencies go to, and I just think that there might be a place for it at some point in time, and the mobile stroke units.
You want a paramedic making that decision, though. That's very different than going to a place where they, if you go to standalone ED, they should all have thrombolytics.
Well, in the mobile stroke unit setting, the CT's been done and I, those are all staffed by nurses currently, but who's to say that's gonna be the staffing?
Yeah, I think they should be staffed by nurses, personally.
So.
So, I mean, I think they should be staffed by nurses, I think thrombolytics should, should be given by nurses or in the inter-facility transport setting.
Well, that's kind of an underlying principle of this whole thing. Are there things that we need to carve out as only the province of nurses to be given? You know, we're kind of blazing brave new trails here, so.
Yeah, I don't think we can expect the critical care paramedic to take on everything that a nurse would be able to do in the out-of-hospital setting. So I don't think that you can say that our goal is to completely replace nurses in the pre-hospital setting by putting critical care paramedics out there. So you just have to be careful about what we're putting on there. Thrombolytics is one I'd be pretty hesitant to put.
It's one that we all agree.
We'll slide on them for another day.
I think, are we all comfortable with this being on Table 3 and then if we feel later, then need to bring it up in a 911 setting?
Definitely on Table 3, but I'm, I'm thinking it started the 911 system. If you've got thromb, it says thrombolytics in the scope of practice table, but, you know, clearly that means thrombolysis. So if you're gonna allow a critical care paramedic to initiate thrombolysis, then I think there's a 911 setting where thrombolytics might be an optional tool, tool box. Urban or rural setting.
Sorry, are you saying for 911 or for inter-facility? Because I, because we don't know if it's a bleed, so.
You don't, right, exactly.
Right. Once again, some of your 911 calls may be to a freestanding ER or urgent care or a rural environment where they've had.
They have, yeah, that's true.
We always think of these in urban environments and. But if it's a 911 initiated call, it's not considered inter-facility.
For statute, an inter-facility is from one healthcare institution to another healthcare institution. Doesn't mean how the call came in, it's, it's from where it's transported to where it's.
Originated through a PISA.
No, that, the statute states what, the definition of an inter-facility transport is from one healthcare institution to another healthcare institution. Doesn't specify in statute whether or not that originates as a 911 call or not.
And I will just say that the other component is, again, we're talking about critical care endorsed trained paramedics. So a typical paramedic on, you know, most jurisdictions are not going to be critical care endorsed trained and, or sort of approved, they're not going to have the critical care endorsement. So remember, we're looking to add this for a critical care endorsement. So typically, when people call 911, they are getting, in most parts of the state, a fire department response. So if we suddenly start seeing a huge increase in fire departments training and getting the personnel for both care endorsement, I think we're kind of mixing two different items here, which is, yes, there's a lot of freestanding emergency supportments, urgent cares that may have imaging and call 911. However, when they call 911, who is the responding unit? I think that's, just to clarify. So I've heard, I think, one vote to keep this here, most votes to boost thrombolytics to Table 3, is that a? Some, if, speak up because those in line can't see head shakes.
For Table 3.
Table 3. Moving, typing move to Table 3. Back online, thank you Julie as well. Yes, Josh as well, thank you, okay. And then last is vasopressin. Keep, maybe, Table 3?
You have the max, mebo. If you already have push dose epi and phenyle, I'd be really surprised if you're like a vasopressant. It's a 911 initiated.
Josh, see your hand up, and then Aaron, next.
I'm so sorry, I raised my hand prematurely, this is a non-vasopressin comment, so come back to me.
Okay. Aaron, did you have a comment on vasopressin?
Just the, I mean, the comment that was previous, so I guess I'm in agreement with the comment that's previously made. If you have norepi, if you have epi, you apparently even have dopamine in the field. I mean, peripheral vasoconstriction, I understand is important, but I don't know why we need to, some may argue, less potent peripheral vasoconstrictors when we have those other pressers.
This is Dan, the answer is because there's some medical director or someone else from somewhere who really wants vasopressin.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
It does seem like the research on vasopressin changes like yearly, like it's in vogue, it's not in vogue, it's good for this, it's not good for that.
We'll take that off this one, I think the readers digest it first and then I'm here, remove from here.
Can you save your move back to Table 3?
Yes. Okay, and then back to you, Josh, we've moved past vasopressin, I'm coming back to you now.
And I'm very sorry for this, I just, I wanted to make sure, and I honestly don't care, I just wanted to note it for discussion. We have selected seemingly three quite random anti-hypertensives for this list. Actually, two, sorry, metoprolol and nicardapine. And we have decided not to do esmolol, hydrazine, labetalol, and I think that's it. I just wanted to make sure we, we kind of discussed several of the comments which focus around the use of labetalol, I think particularly to manage hypertension in stroke patients, as well as pregnancy, eclamptic patients, pre-eclamptic patients. We have diltiazem, of course, which is a calcium channel blocker on the other list. Nicardapine clearly has a different, you know, use, but it's also a calcium channel blocker. Labetalol and metoprolol, obviously slightly different. I personally, in my own practice, use labetalol more than metoprolol. So I wanted to throw that out there for discussion, and if the group feels metoprolol, I'm totally fine with that.
Summarize your suggested change again, Josh.
Oh, I'm sorry. The real question is, do we need metoprolol and nicardapine? Would you like to replace metoprolol with labetalol, which has a little different use than metoprolol?
So I think I hear Matt proposing metoprolol or labetalol.
Sure. They, they do have quite different pace uses, just so we're all on the same page.
I see another question in the chat here. I see another question in the chat here. Why not just beta blocker antihypertensives instead of specific medications?
I mean, I've kind of been down that road before. Uh, had proposals for benzodiazepines, but you know, not specific enough to this, this benzol versus that benzol versus, or that benzol or that benzol. Um, because.
Biotics, just broadly.
That's fair.
Yeah. No, no, with you, it's just to be broad. It's just like, it's tough because we're going to have changes and, and body cramps and so forth. So I can, I get that.
There's so many different things are listed as antihypertentives, but have like tons of other properties. I think we're trying to be specific about things that have, that are really just antihypertensives without being like something else, so. So maybe we just add, not for top or labetalol, but just have them be separate lines.
So I, it sounds like there's a few different proposals. Proposal one is to change metoprolol to labetalol. Proposal two is to say metoprolol or labetalol. Proposal three is to say beta blockers and proposal four is just to delete that from table three. So I'm not hearing a good consensus on this one.
Gil, can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I think, I mean, I'm struggling with this whole thing. Like I have to admit, I'm personally not in love with some of these items on here, but at the same time, I think the struggle is one that you mentioned earlier, which is we, I almost feel like we need to tie the drug to take their practice pathway and then determine whether it belongs on the inter, you know, hospital or interfacility transport versus the scene administration. I think if we take that in totality, then we would all feel a lot more comfortable with what we're adding and or taking away. I think given this kind of review of this table, I'm, I'm left with a lot of uh, questions, I guess, and, and lack of clarity.
I think it's a good point. I think the goal of this is to really have a base, a place where there are optional agents, but agencies, medical director allows their critical care endorsed paramedic to administer these medications in a nine-one-one setting predominantly. Otherwise, they would also be listed on the interfacility, uh, but right now, if they were only in the interfacility unit, that critical care endorsed paramedic could not theoretically give that on other calls. So I think the hope is to really make sure that we don't limit the ability of that critical care endorsed paramedic. But I think it is important to recognize we're really addressing predominantly the, when they go on a nine-one-one call, which I think is why there's some discussion about limiting down this a little bit. Do they really, are they really going to use some of these beds on a scene call per se? I think that's the best way to think about that. And to be honest, I didn't think we were going to get to item F on the agenda, so. If we do, if we need to re, you know, revisit this one at table three, we can. Uh, but if the group wants to kind of come up with like a general proposal, we could take um, table F to M B C M A sixteenth for revisit, we can also do that.
Are there any antihypertensives we need on this table four? I mean, I think that's kind of a question for scene calls, right? And I think if not, then I think you could probably complete table four, right? At least if we, because I think we're sort of close to table four being done. I think the question is the antihypertensives. If there aren't any, we feel strongly need to be on this list. Then we can visit table three, A and B sort of separately, potentially. That would be my recommendation. Question. Has this, has this table now just essentially become a nine-one-one list? Because anything else?
What's the thoughts on that Amber's proposal?
I think the ones that we're sort of having some dis, in, like additional discussion about are mainly from these beta blockers and antihypertensives. So if we're not feeling like they need to be on table four and we're mainly discussing them as a table three line item, then maybe we focus on forgetting about the beta blockers for now and like complete table four. And then we can sort of, you know, move that all to the table three discussion and have that as part of just the final piece. So data blockers and the, the things that we've already discussed moving to table three. We would vote on table three today, at least now, we'd just be voting on table four.
And then we could take table three really through the normal process, uh, which would be PMD and M B C.
Does that mean you're time left?
Yes, because really the critical, the big thing that we needed to accomplish, uh, I think, I do see we've installed online was our scope of practice component. So that was our really limited timeframe to make sure we meet all the goal writing timeframes for that. The drug tables, the critical care endorsement will go live essentially January first, I've checked with Dan. So we have time to kind of clean up some of the drug tables.
The only thing I keep thinking about for the antihypertensives is like the flash pulmonary dea, hypertensive emergency. We're just chatting. It's like, what can you really do right now with a paramedic? CPAP, break the seal, flick in some tablets, close the seal. So it would be nice to have something available for scene call. Uh, and I'm happy to discuss, it's like from people's experience and uh, Dr. O'Connor, from your experience, when you've seen these two from a pharmacological standpoint, like I want to open up another can of worms and see that we wanted to like do a nitro drip to add on here, but just what else could potentially be beneficial? Like we've seen the feasibility study for hypertensive emergency um, with nitro drips and it was great. It was a feasibility study. It wasn't anything else. So having something in scene, I think, is important. Exactly which one specific that is. I, I don't have the world's strongest feeling and that's why having the option for something there, I think, is important. Uh, but again, I am happy to chat about this if you will have strong feelings. Open a can of worms and say, we want to add uh, nitro IV for scene call. That's one I can see having scene call potential.
I think the important thing to do is talk table four into existence today in some form and then this will give grist through the mill of EMD and M B C in the future for additions and other things, so.
So what's currently planning to be on table four? Just because I can't see very well up on the board.
I think you're going to do is eliminate metoprolol and.
So stepping green is what's planning to be on table four, assuming it gets approved, that?
Right.
Okay.
Plus or minus metoprolol.
Plus or minus metoprolol.
Yeah. That probably is going to be the consensus or metoprolol or labetalol, I guess. Uh, in my mind, it makes sense, but I think consensus is to let you move metoprolol to table three and take up options in the other day.
I need to type on that line.
Yes.
Clearly anecdotal. I lived through nifedipine. And I worked in a target rich environment, a hundred thousand seniors. And most of our hypertensive crisis, we discovered while doing free blood pressure checks every morning, they were asymptomatic. The, the nifedipine were great, but I realized the problems that were associated with that. And most of the ones we discovered were asymptomatic. So again, in Sun City, Sun City West, I treated a handful with nifedipine when it was in and never had a problem where I was desperate to be able to treat somebody in the field.
Any patients with uncontrolled hypertension that are rather asymptomatic.
Whatever you're happy to do, that'd be the one thing I would just lean towards is uh, having nitroglycerin IV available either table four or we can discuss it further. But I agree, I'd like to have something moving forward. With table four today, the exact antihypertensive, I'm not incredibly attached to, but I think it's important to have something.
I think if there is evidence from the hospital setting for nitroglycerin, then that might be a good option, Josh.
It's a feasibility study and like, it's the only thing we have right now, but at the same time, it's like, I'm I'm not the most cutting edge of human beings. I'm fully aware of that, but that is the one thing that we've seen people utilizing.
Um, I, I think, I just wanted to clarify, and maybe I missed it because I'm online. I think uh, Amber's proposal was to approve table four without the antihypertensive agents. And then at the next M B C P D R meeting, circle back around to table three and table four together with the review of anti-hypertensive in, in mind. I think we all just needed the time to think about this and which ones go where. Um, I would support that if that was Amber's proposal.
Can we revisit it once we approve it today though? That's the thing. Or would we need a table?
Uh, perhaps. We would it would probably be more sensitive table and then bring it back the next round of meetings.
Yeah, I think there's enough suggestions probably for four still, but I don't know the be ready to maybe table.
I think the only thing is we're going to have the same discussion. The same, this is at least got PMD and M B C together. So I think that is one benefit of doing that. Otherwise, we will have PMD and then two months later is an M B C meet. So um, if we can come to consensus, great. If not, then we don't. But I think if we're really going back and forth on one medication on this list, it just sounds like where we are. Um, do we come to consensus on that one medication, right? Because otherwise we would be in July having this conversation and two months later, M B C having a conversation separately.
Just to ask to the, what, what's the scenario where you all are seeing metoprolol or labetalol being necessary in the pre-hospital setting? And I guess in the same follow-up question would be, when you are dealing with flash pulmonary dea mug, decompensate C H F, not just the asymptomatic two forties, we've all seen those, but like true decompensate C H F. Is anyone using anything different than IV nitro? But if they can't do so, like I'm starting to think like, so I guess, I guess in that case, my proposal would be get rid of the other stuff for now and put on uh, IV nitro, nitroglycerin for here. But.
To answer your metope question, I think like R V R in a setting of someone who's on the top role, they like just took their metope. You have a critical care paramedic, there's still R V R, you think it's primary. It gives a different option than diltiazem. I think of labetalol and hydralazine more of like your pregnant eclamptic patient and then you have your other, you know, category of your folks like uh, that you took on a drip for, that you were talking about. And then the last category is your nitro press, nitro, 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 or whatever. So uh, I think we should bring back. So for that reason, there are different indications. We're talking about nine-one-one systems.
Right.
You can drop that.
Did you say we, you think we should bring back that part? Sorry.
That happened at a large conference while I was speaking too.
Divide interesting.
Define.
I mean, I think I could see a use for metoprolol in a nine-one-one setting as well as hydralazine slash labetalol. I would probably say labetalol or hydralazine, couple those as opposed to metoprolol or labetalol. Since those are more antihypertensives, not rate control agents, which is metoprolol.
You just have a certain process though.
However you want, yep.
That's fine.
I would, I would be, I think because the hydralazine is a different, is a, is a different category, right? So I would since this was a goal of mine a long time ago, to have more classes of drugs to put beta blockers on there and then it's up to the medical director as to which one of those things they choose. Rather than, and then, and then if something else came out and was even better than it's covered in, we don't have to come back and just keep adding on different names of drugs to the thing. I know it's easier to do now since, since it can be done at, at PMD meeting, M B C meeting, then it goes to the director because it's not rulemaking anymore, but still. If, if, if we're going to have a beta blocker on there, I think we should just have beta blockers on here.
That would cover three.
What's that?
But that would cover three if you're doing, if you're doing metoprolol, labetalol and esmol.
So the other question is, do we think that those are needed for a nine-one-one response? I think that's kind of the back to that component.
Like to your question, kind of you're saying, do you, do you envision like a nine-one-one setting with AFib R V R that you would want metoprolol available for? Like, I'm just curious.
Myopathy, like the lower E Fs usually, at least our cards think that they respond a lot better to the.
Pre-hospital setting, you wouldn't know that.
If they know they've got a cardiomyopathy patient with low E Fs, they may know. I mean, once my patient, I've got a bunch of them that are R V R that know what their last E F was. Pretty low. What we're saying in the setting of critical care, so the hope is, is that critical care paramedic would also be a little more tuned to that than if they hear my E F is fifteen, they're gonna.
Well, what's, what's an E F then? Okay.
Right, exactly.
When the patient responds with that, they go.
Point is like way up. So I just need utility to have a, at least metoprolol on there. And there was somebody that mentioned before that they get a lot of, uh, they do get a lot of uh, pregnant females coming from the border where they do use a lot of metoprolol and hydralazine now, one or the other, but I think for nine-one-one, if, if their agencies are really using that, should be available.
This is Dan. Um, so this is one of those settings where from the pre-hospital perspective, interfacility or nine-one-one, we're dealing here entirely with basically non-evidence-based decision-making. Um, my overarching uh, experience and approach in need is the scenarios we're painting now are actually uh, rare. The usages are rare and that in general, uh, clumping, i.e. meaning if we can do it with two medications instead of seven, uh, is likely to decrease dosing errors. As we know with these, you can, you can really hurt people uh, if, if you do them wrong. Um, and so what I would say is uh, we try to estimate what's most likely to get used the most. We pick the one or two in, in the category or two that we want, but not have the creep of more and more. Uh, it's a, it, it's a rarer usage of rarely used drugs in this setting.
I feel like we uh, moved from a conversation of one drug to now a conversation of many.
We just focused on the beta blockers maybe. What do you think? Metoprolol. And then labetalol. So I heard more people say yes, metoprolol to nine-one-one. That's what I heard more, so like. I mean, as far as evidence based for AFib R V R, I think you've got just as much evidence for metoprolol than you do, as you do for, I mean, there's, it goes back and forth half the time for metoprolol and cardism. So if you want to use that as the as, as what we're using as our basis of evidence based, I think we're close fifty-fifty on that too. That changes every other year with whatever new study comes out, but it's pretty close.
Also need labetalol or can we forego labetalol?
I don't use it. I was just looking at what the thing was. So I mean, as far as, I don't know how often. I, I mean, I think as long as you have something like a hydralazine or some other option available, it's neither of those, but that would be my.
So I think uh, we, we're kind of going around uh, quite a bit in this table. I think I, which was hoping to get like consensus on this one. I, I think probably people need to step away from this, think about it some more, uh, and kind of really go back to what is the goal of this and recognizing how often is this going to be used for these types of settings? Uh, because we don't want to just push something through, but I also feel like uh, realistically, how often in a nine-one-one setting is someone going to need to use any of these hypertense medications? Do we really need to have these all or any of them or more than one or two as an option, right? Um, again, this is a critical care endorsed paramedic responding to a nine-one-one call. Uh, what is the likelihood of them responding and what are the options and what's evidence, if any? So it sounds like there's. So it sounds like there's lots of people that will question the utility of even treating AFib with R V R, if they're maintaining a solid blood pressure, right? So there's, I think, questions that have to be discussed, so I would make a recommendation, consider tableing this. Um, and trying to kind of, um, take some more time to think about this, and then we would reassess at P M D and then M B C, so July, September meetings.
I think this is a good starting point for such discussion. So I, I would start over with, like, when I, I can start with that. Move to table.
Table, table three or two?
Part of P M D, because I can't, I can't make a motion.
So is Dr. Gamers motioning for P M D? And then.
Oh, okay, so, uh, the motion on the table is to table the item F. Uh, I believe, right, item F, yes, table four, um, until our next P M D meeting, uh, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any? Any extension? Okay, table.
Aye. Aye, and then for M B C, if I can get a motion to table. I've seen a device, first and second. All right, any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? All those in favor, say aye. So I do see a question in the chat, uh, from Kevin. I think the, uh, reality with all of the questions and comments is that we do need to clarify, uh, which tables will be used and which setting, and kind of, uh, it sounds like a good conversation, good discussion pieces of how these be used, and make sure that as we bring that forward to the next round of meetings. Uh, we, we, than I anticipated, but, um, I think we can hopefully bring it back with some more clarity, knowing that there is not the same time, time frame rush. We have plenty of time to get that approved, so. Can we table D as well?
I can, I'll make a motion to adjourn now, then, before we move to that.
Brian is making a motion to adjourn.
We don't have to table it.
Dr. Gamers seconding the motion.
All right, uh, yeah. All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everyone, we appreciate all of your input today, uh, and I've been willing to give up a good chunk of your time, so thank you.
Thank you.